Good evening. I'll call the January 8th Select Board Meeting to Order. I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda, so we'll accept it with unanimous consent. And announcements.
We just have the one announcement, that this meeting is being video and audio recorded.
Should we let people know that nomination papers are open?
Oh, that's not something I pay close attention to, but you could.
Doing it when they're due back.
I don't even know the dates. It's open, so if people are interested.
It's open and they're due back in February.
Yeah, February 18th. Thank you. So if you're interested in February 18th, if you're interested in running for public office, the nomination papers are available in the Town Clerk's office, and you can get instructions there on how many signatures you need, and they need to be from registered voters on Nantucket.
I have the list available. It's Select Board, School Committee, Moderator, Historic District Commission, Housing Authority, Land Bank, Harbor Shellfish Advisory, Planning Board, Water Commission, both Nantucket and Sias Council.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening for something that is not on our agenda?
Happy New Year. 2020, I can't believe it. Fourteen short years, I'll be 100. We were studying George Orwell in university, and it was in the 50s, and we all said, wow, it'll never be 1984, and that's 36 years ago. Anyway, my wife and I decided we'd have a jovial New Year's Eve, and so we invited three friends from the mainland, and two or a couple from Wellfleet. And the guy's name is James O'Connell, and he's one of the premier oyster farmers of Wellfleet. So one afternoon, I guess it was either the night before New Year's or New Year's Eve or whatever, and I was busy cooking, and my wife wanted to take her usual walk with the dog, and James went with her, and they walked all over the town and so forth and so forth. When James came back, he walked over to me. He said, Steve, he said, the catch basins are filthy. He says, they're full of oil, full of sand, full of leaves. He says, it's disgusting. He says, don't you know those are point sources that go directly into a navigable waterway, which is Nantucket Harbor? And I said, well, I know. I haven't seen them cleaned in the 50 years I've been here. I said, what are you doing, Wellfleet? He says, we periodically clean them. When they get dirty, they get cleaned. He said, you know, those dirty storm drains are violating federal law. I said, what? He said, Steve, go look up the Clean Water Act and read it carefully. So after he left, early January, I started to read the Clean Water Act, which is not the first time I read it, but I read it so long ago that I couldn't remember it. And there it was, federal crime if storm drains, which are point sources, are not kept clean. I said, whoa. I said, I think I'd call the feds unless I see them being cleaned. And the reason I say that is that before I came to Nantucket, I was canoeing down the Shawshene River, and I was on the way towards Bedford, Mass., and suddenly, there was no houses. This portion of the Shawshene River is just through beautiful fields and forest. Suddenly, the water started to turn dark and darker and darker, and then there was nothing growing on both sides of the river. It was all dead, and I got kind of nervous. I said, if I tip my canoe over, the water will probably eat me alive. It looked so ominous. As I was turning around, I looked through, and there was Reichold Chemical Company. When I got back to my office in Lexington, I called the feds, and they descended with engineers like mad and cleaned that place up. Actually, what they were doing was, they had some chemical storage places just in the ground, and the Army Corps of Engineers had given permission to do this and so forth. They were polluting a mile of the river, big time. So the reason I tell that story is that maybe two or three years ago, Mrs. Gibson told me that they had $2 million that they were going to put into storm drain cleaning. I haven't seen a bloody thing yet, and you know that I have brought up the issue before under the Chapter 91 Amnesty License of the Winthrop Corporation, First Winthrop, and the town has done nothing about that, three years later. By the town, I mean the Conservation Commission and the Natural Resources. At any rate, I don't intend to sic the feds on us for a short time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have anything like that to say. Okay, so I wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone and thank all of you for your time and efforts that you take weekly to guide Nantucket forward. So I just wanted to say a few words regarding the withdrawal of my citizens petition, as I don't want folks to get the impression that the negative sentiments sent my way influenced my decision in this regard, as they did not. However, I did take this action because it became apparent to me that the omission of an effectiveness date, i.e. upon passage at annual town meeting or something of that sort, meant that it went into effect immediately without a vote by anybody, but with many unintended consequences to plans already in the works. It was for this reason that I took the time and effort to regather the signatures needed and submit it before the holidays that just passed. I continue to believe my original petition has merit, especially in the smaller residential districts. One doesn't have to look far to see that lots are being overbuilt, both in ground cover and building mass, based on the current model, using the entire lot size to determine the amount of ground cover allowable on the buildable portion of the lot. For instance, a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is allowed 40% coverage, actually gets 67% coverage on the buildable portion of the lot when the current method of determination is used. I won't bore you with the math here, but I hope to be able to work within the existing system to address these disparities and make sure that that's what we're getting is what we're looking for. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight?
Hi, Michael Harder, Macy's Lane. The town very wisely is very particular about signage on the island, where and when and how many, and I think lately I've seen too many of very important signs for like cat missing and yard sale, which are great, but I think if they're important enough to go up, they should come down within seven days or so, is reasonable time. So for instance, there was a stroll yard sale, and five days after, they put about, my intersection, Macy's and Old South, there was about 10 signs. They clustered them on intersections, and so I'm like, all right, five days, give them two more days, and then maybe I'll pick them up. Maybe they forgot about their sign. So that day, I'm going across five corners, and I see a cluster of three of them blow across the intersection. I pull over, I pick it up, and I'm like, all right, it's going to, the Saturday after stroll, the boats weren't going to run. I'm like, all right, during my errands, if I see these signs, I'll pick some up. I attempted to contact these people, and I couldn't, so I picked up 42 of their signs, 42 of them here, there's 10 more, at least 10 more I saw today. These people have a new house, and they're off-island, they're gone until whenever, and it's littering right in our face. It's going to stay on the sign or fall off, but I don't know, maybe there's something we can do about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we saw your, you sent, he sent an email to us as well, so we've all seen pictures of that, and you know, it's being looked into.
Thank you very much.
It's an ongoing problem. I don't believe there's any new business tonight. Approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. Approval of the minutes?
Some moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Payroll and Treasury warrants?
I moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Are there any questions, comments?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have some consent items. Gift acceptances?
Motion to approve and send thanks to the donors.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is in departmental requests. We have two committee appointments tonight, starting with Conservation Commission. You have ballots? Sean Perry, Matt. Mark Biel, Christie. Sean Perry, Rita. Mark Biel, Dawn. So Mark has won the appointment. Next, we have Finance Committee. I believe that that is uncontested.
I want to make a comment. I just, I should have commented prior. I just find the whole process was a little flawed. I like, you know, Mark a lot, I like, but I think we had a young, I feel very unfortunate that Sean wasn't elected. We have a young person, which is what we say we want in government. He's qualified, his family has done tons of work in that regard on Nantucket, and I think it's unfortunate how we did this. And I just want to be on the record again, saying that I think, you know, if we have a date, a date is a date, and I just don't, I don't like how it was done. So anyway.
Well.
You can say it was great, but I don't like it, so I have my opinion.
This isn't really a public comment. We're in the middle of making the next appointment. I mean, this is, the next one is uncontested.
Okay.
So I just need a motion.
I make a motion to accept.
Point by acquisition.
Point by acquisition. George Harrington.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Me, oh, second.
I'll second. I didn't, but I will.
Nantucket Land Council, request for approval and execution of a conservation restriction for 16 Midowee Creek Road. This last came up, I guess, in the fall of 18.
Yes, and what's happened now is that the conservation restriction has been approved by the state. It's for a 4.6-acre parcel at Midowee Creek, and it is done pursuant to the MESA and the National Heritage Endangered Species Program. The land under the conservation restriction is sandplain grassland and preserves the coastal area, and much of this site lies within the 100-year floodplain of the Popus Harbor, so that the undisturbed environment will provide groundwater recharge and protect the wetland resource area. We've spoken to town council, and while the reason for the Select Board having to approve this is that while it is a conservation restriction given to a nonprofit, because it's in the public benefit of the public interest, is necessary for the Select Board to approve that, and it then goes back to the state for final signature and recording. So it is my recommendation and that of town council that we proceed to execute and then forward on for the final signature.
And I just want to note that if you move to approve this, you need to note that you find it in the public interest. Okay.
Just one question. Is there any public access now, or is there an opportunity?
That's not part of the conservation restriction with respect to providing public access.
It never is?
No, it was never part of it.
Okay. This particular one, or you're saying no CR?
No, 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 I'm just saying, this particular one doesn't have anything with respect to it.
I think this one has some endangered species, or there's some additional certain environmental reasons why there's no public access.
Okay.
We would have people with that.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve the conservation restriction, but sorry, Erica, what was it that we had to know?
Find that it's in the public interest.
And find that it is in the public interest.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have Affordable Housing Trust Neighborhood First Program update.
Thank you for inviting us here today. My name is Brooke Moore. I'm the vice chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I was a member of the Neighborhood First Advisory Committee in that capacity. I'd like to draw attention to Dave Iverson and Penny Dye, and Peter Hoey is here as well, who was one of the co-chairs of the Neighborhood First Advisory Committee. So we have a deck for you that we've put in the packet, and I'd like to start by thanking the voters of our community for approving this Citizens' warrant article last April, allocating or authorizing a borrowing potential of $20 million to address affordable workforce housing on Nantucket. The Affordable Housing Trust hit the ground running right after town meeting, and our first order of business was to seek information about and a plan for the expenditure of the money, bearing in mind that we wanted to be responsible stewards of the trust that was placed in us with regard to these funds. And so if we could go to the next slide, I'll sort of run through the process. It was important to us that we assemble a team of thoughtful year-round representatives, and we put out a request for applications, and we received 19 applications and had a really diverse group of folks with a lot of background, so we felt we had a super-strong committee that brought a lot of professional, personal expertise in the area of affordable housing to the table in our discussions, and that was incredibly valuable. We, our first step was to analyze where we are, to do an analysis of how 40B impacts Nantucket, our community, where we are in terms of Chapter 40B regulations and the creation of affordable housing and the 10% threshold, and to really understand and present to the Affordable Housing Trust a comprehensive document that explains where we are and where we're headed in the next number of years. And so we worked on that, and that included reviews by legal experts, the finance director, and then once we sort of got to where we are, we made an evaluation of the warrant article itself and tried to determine where we needed to go, what was the best way to spend this money to get to the goals that we had laid out for ourselves. And I wanted to point out that the original date the trust set for completion of the Neighborhood First Work Group was February, and they completed their work in December, so on time, early, which is great, because I know the community is anxious to get the ball rolling on spending this money, but we wanted to be judicious in that process as well. So our initial reports were as described, a thorough analysis of where we are and what the landscape looks like for the next several years in affordable housing, and particularly as it relates to safe harbor under Chapter 40B. And we are currently at 100, oh, we can forward the next slide. So we're currently at 191 units, which represents 3.9%. We have 259 units in the pipeline. There's always caveats to everything in affordable housing, and so that would bring us to 435 units, or 8.9%. So we will be close with what we already know is in the pipeline, assuming things work out in legal processes and so, and everything gets built out that is planned. We were granted a two-year safe harbor period that will last until June of 2021, but we're still going to be units short in the years after that, so that is one of the priorities of the Affordable Housing Trust and Neighborhood First in particular, is to make sure that we stay in safe harbor and so that we retain control over how affordable housing gets done in Nantucket. And so we wanted to create a document, which we did, which is in your packets, available on our website, that outlines all of this. And then the next step, make sure I got one thing that I made note of that I want to make highlight, there's a real challenge in distilling the complex and interlocking pieces of affordable housing and safe harbor, and it's a really complex puzzle, and we needed to, we need to know how to put the next projects in, to interlock in a way that keeps us in safe harbor and also meets the goal of the article as we understood it, which is to disperse affordable housing across the island as the best we can do. And those two goals are, have to be married together carefully, particularly with the safe harbor piece, and I think keeping track of that over time is one of the critical elements of this program. So the Neighborhood First Advisory Committee recommended three different approaches to the creation of affordable housing with the Neighborhood First dollars. One is dispersed site purchases, which we would describe as smaller site, purchase of existing, either undeveloped or properties that have housing on them and having multiple rental units on those individual sites scattered around Nantucket. The other, second option we have in the toolbox is the buy-down of existing year-round units, which would be basically a cash outlay to a property owner in order to put a restriction on the property to rent it affordably. And we don't have a particular program in mind. In fact, this was the least appealing to the committee of the three, but we left it in the toolbox because we didn't really know what potential there was in this area. We know it's being used elsewhere, and we wanted to leave ourselves open to be able to utilize it if a special opportunity came across where it made sense. And then the third is multiple pocket developments, which would be somewhat on a larger scale. And the reason this option is appealing is that when you scale up in the creation of affordable housing, you get access to tax credits that substantially bring the per-unit cost down, and so we felt this was an important direction to have available to us because we want to maximize the number of families that we get in houses with the $20 million, and it also helps in terms of meeting the safe harbor requirements and staying in safe harbor, because our safe harbor is 24 units a year we have to create in a year. So in 2021, we have to create about 24 more units, depending on what habitat and housing Nantucket do. So having the capacity to do something on a slightly larger scale is critical to, again, putting that puzzle together. The group also felt it was really important to look at, to establish a set of criteria by which we would evaluate properties that came to our opportunities that came for purchase, things that we think are important in the field of affordable housing in general, which is energy efficiency, how it looks, what the scale is, how it fits in the neighborhood, how it adheres to current zoning, and then transportation, employment, all of the other impacts that housing has on our community. And then an interesting piece of this is also, are we taking something that's already occupied year-round, taking out of the rental, the available market, and then displacing someone who's already got a year-round home in order to put it into the shy list? And so that's one of the factors that we want to consider as we're evaluating properties. So our three key principles are listed there, to provide year or years of safe harbor, to utilize multiple sites, and to do this as fiscally efficiently as possible for the taxpayer, so maximizing our bang for the buck, whilst always considering what's appropriate for Nantucket, what's appropriate for a particular location, and how a particular project appears, and also that it meets the needs of the folks who need housing. So that's kind of the summary, and then I just wanted to add that, what to expect in 2020. So the trust is already actively looking at property. The nature of real estate negotiations is not public, so I just like to assure the community that progress is being made on that front. We will be formally doing outreach, or codifying or determining how we're going to do outreach to the community at our January meeting to solicit offers for properties to sell into the program, and very specifically, we need to very, within the next six months or so, have the bones of a plan for the next set of 24 units of housing for the next round of safe harbor, but that we have to do in 2021. That has to be ready to go in the first half of 2021, so we'll be actively working on that. And then beyond Neighborhood First, I would like to take a moment to add a couple of things. We've launched, in cooperation with Housing Nantucket, a covenant loan assistance program, which is designed to create more covenant properties, either lots or houses, by identifying folks whose land is eligible for the covenant program and loaning them the upfront costs, the money for the upfront cost of legal site survey work, as well as technical expertise. So the loan program is a loan of up to $10,000. It's interest-free for 18 months, and then it gets repaid when the property gets sold. So we're basically trying to make it easier for people to create more covenant lots, and especially for folks who don't have the cash, to hire the people to make it happen for them. So, and that will be available to individuals, but not corporations or LLCs, just to individual owners. And then Tucker and Ken Brogrand and I did a round trip to Boston today, and one good piece of news on the housing front statewide is that Little Nantucket started a groundswell with our housing bank bill. Everybody else liked it, and a number of communities have also filed Home Rule petitions for similar, they're all structured a little differently, but there's a whole bunch of them at the State House this year for transfer fees to fund affordable housing. And in response to that, including Boston last week, which is a game changer, the city of Boston voted for a 2% transfer fee on real estate sales. And so what's happening is, the groundswell is growing in support for communities being able to generate revenue themselves to solve their affordable housing needs, and so there are a number of legislators that are, Julian and Dylan are working with, this mostly happens on the House side because it's finance-related, to do a omnibus bill, which will give communities the opt-in option.
Brooke, for the camera, could you detail what Nantucket's already voted, because there's been a little bit of confusion?
Absolutely. So our housing bank bill, as we've been calling it, is a one-half of 1% transfer fee, similar in the way it's done to the land bank, so people are familiar with the land bank fee. So this would be additive to that, but it would be paid by the seller, not the buyer, different from the land bank, and it would only be paid on the value of the property in excess of $2 million. So it would be paid on the $2 million and first dollar and up. So by a specific example, if one were to sell a house for $3 million, you would pay $5,000 into monies that would come to the Affordable Housing Trust for the creation and maintenance of affordable housing and workforce housing, so.
Thank you. There have just been a lot of questions on that.
So.
You might add, it's passed twice.
Yeah, it's passed multiple times, at three times at town meeting, and we got as far as the speaker's desk the last session, but politics are politics, and there is some opposition from the Realtor organizations statewide, not from the Nantucket Realtors. There's been great support for it, and I think, you know, hopefully there'll be some press out of this press conference that happened today, and we're seeing, I was just reading the news, and there were a bunch of articles, and sadly, no sadly, no one mentioned that Nantucket got the ball rolling. But when the big guys come to play, that's what we hear about. And that's really, Somerville's another large community in the Boston, Boston metro area. Concord has also done one. So we're in good company now, and the conversation is definitely on the table. We felt it this, the last time we went up to testify, and we certainly felt it today. And so we're hopeful that, we are proceeding, just to be clear, we're supporting the omnibus bill that would, would be available to every community, but parallel to that, we're also following up on our housing bank bill. Because if that one doesn't pass, we'll keep trying to get ours in independently of everyone else. So, I'm, do you guys want to say anything?
Yeah, I just can't keep my mouth shut. Sorry, everybody. Hi, I'm Penny Dye, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust group and representative from that group to the Neighborhood First group. And I just, I just want to extend my personal thanks, not only to Peter Howey, but Doug Abbey, who is a seasonal resident, who co-chaired the group. One of the things that was such an education for me is this puzzle of the shy list and staying on top of it. It is extremely complex. And another factor that's going to impact this is the 10% is calculated on designated year-round residences. That will change when we have the 2020 census, the results of which we will not get until 2021. Is that right?
Or 2022.
Or 2022. So it's a very complicated and sort of fast-moving puzzle. And it, it is impacted by things such as pending litigation. Things can drop off the list, things can quickly get added onto the list. So I'm just grateful that we have professional people who are keeping track of this. So, thank you.
Jason has a question.
I just had one question. On number two of your approach, the buy-down of existing year-round units, why is that not as desirable on Nantucket? I'm sure there's lots of reasons, but.
I, I think our biggest concern is the displacement, the potential for displacement of people who are already year-rounders in those rental units. The one proposal that came across our bow was four units that are occupied, you know, at, at probably relatively reasonable rents. And in order to qualify a rental unit on a property, if there's one unit on the property, in order to qualify it for the shy list, you would have to move the person out and, and put it out by lottery in order for it to count.
So I, I had a vision taking a weekly rental house, that's, you know, it's not, it's someone who's already in there renting year-round, so.
Well, I mean, we, we don't, the, the number of options in the, in the sphere of buy-down are, are pretty wide. But mostly, you know, the opportunity that we knew of was year-round occupied properties, and that was really not appealing to us in terms of our getting and keeping year-rounders in their homes. So, sure.
When, just a comment on that, when a lot of the year-round homes are selling now, though, they are not selling to year-round people. So if one does come up, you should, you know, we have to be careful not to assume that it's going to go back to a year-round person. The reason we have fewer year-round homes now than we did, say, 10 years ago, is because of that impact. That, you know, a lot of them are being turned into tourist homes and Airbnb and family, a lot of other issues, uses than year-round housing in places that you think would be sort of, well, you know, that's an island or neighborhood. They are slowly transitioning to not being those anymore, especially ones with decent-sized lots. So I would hope that you guys keep that, you know, in mind when you're, when you're doing that. The other thing that happens that I've read a lot on the state level, there's a theory that if you build, just build enough, that there'll be downward pressure and everything will be fine. Maybe that will work out there, but on Nantucket, that doesn't work. Because if it did work, we have built at the highest levels in the state for like 15, 20 years. If that theory was true, it, we would be all set. Except we're worse than we've ever been. And the reason, as we all know, is that there's outside influences coming in that are bidding these up and, and are able to get them, which is why we really should be doing a bifurcated market, and, which is what we're trying to do, and making sure some houses are just, you know, year-round permanently, some are at different levels. Unless you do that, there's no guarantee. And what I've tried to do is tease out the, you know, how much of the last 20 years, 30 years, price increase, how much of that is inflation, how much of that is improvements to the property, how much of that is just, you know, market forces and what they've done? And then I've got some numbers that I've shared with a couple of people. We haven't quite figured it out, because that's got to be someone smarter than me on that. But I think it's going to end up being something like 30, 40% of the, you know, billions at all of the increase that we've seen is going to have just been the outside forces that are in here impacting the market. Maybe Penny probably knows it right off the top of her head.
No, I don't, I don't begin to, but I just want to say there's another factor at play here in terms of displacement of previously year-round people, which is the choice to move off. Or, to put it quite bluntly, cash in.
And I just wanted to make a quick comment about your first statement. When the data platform presented at the same Neighborhood First meeting to the Affordable Housing Trust, they actually predicted that we're going to have 100 more units, year-round units to add?
Yes.
Correct? Yes, Tucker? To the shy list. So now we're going to be closer to 590 to get to the 10%. So we've actually added stock.
If, yeah, you're absolutely correct, based on what they presented to us. But they are doing a little further combing through their data and kind of getting back to us on why that, that's much larger than we would expect. I just wanted to quickly add to the question about the buy-down of rentals. I mean, what was on the table was essentially a proposal saying, pay me $6 million, I'll restrict six of my units, all of the, 24 units were going on the shy list, I will continue to charge market rate rents for the 18 other units. It didn't really strike us.
It gets to the maintenance.
Yeah, and, and we, yeah, it just, it, it didn't work the way it was presented, but as you can see, it's still part of, you know, we would look at variations or a better approach on it.
And I'd like, to Matt's point, I think that, you know, what, every piece of this, every time we enter the real estate market as, as a, as a community, as a government, you push and there's an impact. And, and I think that we want to be very careful that there are not unintended negative consequences for our actions, or that we minimize the negative consequences, you know, in the service of the good. And I think here's one example. If we're buying individual houses, it is possible that we could be competing with that person who just saved a down payment to get that low end of the free-market house and is a year-round person. So these, I just want the community to know that we're very cognizant of the impact of entering into the real estate market and how it relates to other people. So it's, it's, it's a, again, super-complex puzzle that you're never going to not have any consequences, but we're trying to be as aware of the potential for negative consequences in the service of doing something we think is critical for preserving our community. Penny asked me to say this, and I forgot. And the other thing we need to be clear on is, is the Affordable Housing Trust makes a recommendation to the select board for the purchase of properties. So we will, we will be the pipeline through which the decisions will be made. And ultimately, there's, and the point of that is that there's another layer of review of the decisions and recommendations that we're making for literally, for every penny that will be spent on this. So I, I think that should reassure the community too, that, that this will be a sensible process. And transparency was really critical for me. And I have been hearing, how come you haven't spent the money? How come you haven't spent the money? Including last week's paper. And I think we would have made a huge mistake. The phone rang, literally, the day after town meeting, and we had people calling us saying, I have this property, I have that property, I have this proposal. And for two reasons. We wanted to make sure we had, we had a plan that made sense, and we wanted to make sure the process was transparent so that property owner A and property owner B both want to sell their property to Neighborhood First, we needed to be able to explain to the person whose property wasn't purchased, why we chose the other property. And that has to be transparent and clear in a community like this. It's a lot of money, and we want to be responsible.
But we, we should also say that we have made offers on properties. We have entered into negotiations. We just, that has to be done in an executive session type of way, because we're negotiating on real estate. And just so that people don't think that we haven't actually made any moves, they just haven't come to fruition.
And I would like, just like to add, I, I'm really glad that you brought that up, because I found it really frustrating that between the paper, Facebook, word, word of mouth, that there's been these comments, why hasn't the money been spent? And I think, just to say it one more time, the role of the.
Rita?
Yeah.
Into it? Oh, there we are, yeah. The, of the Neighborhood First Advisory Committee was to define the process and strategy, to make recommendations to the Affordable Housing Trust, with the select board having the final decisions with how the money's spent, but that the ultimate goal is to keep us in safe harbor. And part of the reason that we don't have to spend the money is because we are in safe harbor. So I think that, again, the expectation that we would have just gone out and spent $20 million, if we weren't in safe harbor, we'd be in a very different position. But right now, I really do think that we're taking the most responsible, we're able to take the most responsible approach because we're in safe harbor. So I really just wanted to clarify that, that if we don't need to, I have thought from the start, I really appreciate this article came forward, but if we don't need to spend the money, it's being, we, it means that we have maintained safe harbor without it, which would be the ultimate goal. So if we don't spend a penny, we've done a great job. But if we do, then thankfully, we have the ability to, to access funds at that scale.
And I'll add to that, we need to get people in houses and provide stable housing. And so it's that, it's that marrying together of the 40B landscape with the need. And so that's our job. And we're doing it.
I think Rick Atherton has a question or comment.
I would like to spend a little bit of time making a couple of remarks, comments about the report, if you don't mind. First off, I might just remind us all that we wouldn't be here talking about this if it wasn't for Tobias Glidden and frankly, myself, putting the citizen article forward. Now Tucker helped us a great deal, but it was a citizen article, and it was designed after two developers, Mr. Posner and Mr. Feeley, moved into the South Shore Road neighborhood and I think want to change the dynamics of that neighborhood. And the risk is that if we don't have safe harbor, that can happen to any other neighborhood. I have two issues with the report, the way it's come forward, that I hope you'll consider in your being the ultimate deciders, arbiters, acceptors of the plan. And I'll try and go through them both. First of all, the article was based on buying existing properties. And in my mind, and I, it was clear to me, I think it was clear to Tobias, it's clear in the record before the Finance Committee, all the work went into the preparation for the article to present it to the 2019 town meeting. It was abundantly clear, these were existing housing properties, they were not existing land. Okay? And we'll go through that in a minute. And I would contrast that, just so we all understand, at the same meeting, town meeting approved $5 million, $5 million for the purchase of land to be used for affordable housing purposes. And it's just sort of remarkable to me that town council, members of the Neighborhood First Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust have decided to interpret the existing properties as being available for anything, including vacant land. And just, it doesn't sit well with me. I think most people assume that existing means there's a structure existing on the property. Otherwise, we could have had an article that had $20 million or $30 to start with to buy land. That's not what it said. And again, I contrast that with the article, $5 million, which was for cost of acquiring land, which may include any building thereon. In other words, they said they might buy a building, but they were to buy land. The article for the $20 million, as it turned out to be amended for that amount, doesn't refer to land at all. And I just am troubled by the expansion of the intent of this article. So I would hope you would say, the intent is to buy existing houses. It sort of ties in a little bit to what Mr. Fee was referring to. The supply-side approach to this is not likely to be successful in the long run. But yet the Neighborhood First Committee, and we'll talk about this in my second point, wants as one of their primary strategies to buy vacant land and build up to 30 units in the same location. To me, that's almost like, I think of it as a mini 40B. So they want to develop something that I think they like to describe as maybe like a Satcham's path, but you don't know what kind of a development's going to be. And I just don't think that was the intent of the article. So when you go through the report, the, coming from the Neighborhood First Committee, the first draft of that report did not mention the fact that the Affordable Housing Trust and the town and the selectmen have $5 million available. They can use that $5 million first. There are no restrictions on it. They can buy property, they can use it for developing a 30 million, a three, a 30-unit project. It can have all the tax credits they want, whatever they want to structure it as. That, to me, was the first dollar to be spent. When I stood up at town meeting and referred to the $20 million and tried to get the town meeting to support it, and hopefully then to vote at the ballot box, and I went back incidentally to watch the tape and listen to all that discussion, I mentioned, and I think it's, was part of the intent here, it was almost like an insurance policy. And that ties into what Rita Higgins just said. If the town has the ability to meet the 40B requirements and reach ultimate safe harbor without using any of this $20 million, it was said at town meeting, that would have been a good thing. Okay? So to, to end up in a situation where it appears we're recommending to spend the $20 million first, when the $5 million could easily pick up 24 units and maybe many more units, and assure we get to safe harbor in time to meet the total requirement, that's what I think we ought to be doing.
I, can I just make one point of clarification on the $5 million? Because that's through the CPC, it is limited to, to 100% of area median income, which just makes the economics a bit, a bit different, just.
Look, I, you know, I'm not here to get into the particulars of that, but I think the community understood it that way. There are, and I've heard some of this from my discussions with Tucker, there are all these problems, there are all the reasons we can't do this, we can't do that. But I think we're here to find the reasons to get it done that way. Otherwise, you know, I've said to some people, maybe the best way for you to clarify the distinction I'm trying to draw, frankly, would be to have another article at town meeting. You would go to town meeting and rescind the existing article, and go to town meeting and say, we didn't mean to buy existing properties, we meant to buy land or existing properties, and let the town meeting and the voters decide on that. I, I know I've had some people who have said, Rick, the primary reason this got through was because we wanted to meet the shy list. Well, that was only one reason. The primary reason was to disperse the impact on neighborhoods. That was really the most important reason. And it ties together, of course, with the shy list. So it, as I said, let me go back to the, in terms of the report prepared, the $5 million was never even mentioned, whether it's restricted or not, Dylan. And it only is mentioned, I think, because I stood up at a Neighborhood First meeting and said, wait a minute, where's the $5 million? You don't even, it doesn't even exist, apparently.
It's not being administered through Neighborhood First.
So I, well, I'm just expressing my disappointment with that.
I'm just trying to clarify.
And in terms of town council's opinion, you know, I, I think he. And in terms of Town Council's opinion, you know, I think he, when you read what he says, he indicates that he did not, he was asked the question, could the $20 million be used to buy vacant land? And he said, well, I guess so. It doesn't limit existing properties to properties with houses. But I think the common interpretation is that existing property assumed that there would be a house on the property, okay? He admits in his comment to the Neighborhood First Committee that he didn't go back and check with the intent of the sponsors of the article. He didn't go back and check, it's sort of like a congressional hearing in Washington, where you have a dispute or a difference of opinion, you go back to the congressional record. If you go back to the information supplied to the Finance Committee by Tobias, every single example has an existing house on it. There was never an example presented there or at a town meeting that said we could buy a blank piece of property and build 30 units on it. It was not the case. So I just hope you'll consider that as you go forward. Thank you.
Can Christie have a comment first, then you next?
I just wanted to touch on a little bit of Rick's comments. I was the select board rep for Neighborhood First, and we really looked at all three options and weighed all of them as to which one would be kind of, you know, the best use of tax dollars, how do we get the most people into housing, all of that. But I really wanted to touch on this idea of it being an insurance policy and getting safe harbor. And so if we were to go out and spend 20 million on dispersed properties, it's a very difficult process to get everything on the shy list. We'd have to submit each property as its own individual application. And I've done this with Habitat when I worked for them, and it took a year and a half and we got denied at the end of it. So if the town went and spent $20 million and then got denied, we wouldn't be in safe harbor and then a 40B could come up. So I think we're trying to do everything, like Brooke said, it's a really difficult puzzle. We have to make sure that we time everything perfect, that we get safe harbor at the exact right month, on the day of the month, all of that. So I think we're doing the best we can, and if that means we have to go with the open land, that's something that we might have to consider. But I think if we go and spend the money and then we're not in safe harbor, that's a lot worse for the voters. That's, personally, that's how I feel.
I actually just had a question for you, Rick, because I think this is very different. The idea that the intention was first and foremost to disperse the impact on neighborhoods, I think does put a different light on the article. But my question is if it's a scenario where we need 10 houses to get into safe harbor and 10, or 10 units would cost a full $20 million versus a piece of land where we could put a Satchem's path of 10 units, based on the dispersion being the priority, you would rather have seen the money be spent, not spent at all, or the full $20 million spent on 10 dispersed units, as opposed to acquiring land where we could put 10 units.
I'm clearly interested in reaching safe harbor. I mean, there's no question, I understand that. I think there are many other things that can happen between now and then as well, okay? We don't know exactly what's going to happen with Richmond, whether all those properties are going to come out and when. There are a lot of open questions. And that's why I refer to the $5 million, whether they're limited in some way, Dawn or not, some of that money could well be for shy eligible units. And I would hope they would go first. And I would be very disappointed if we ended up doing the first, the third of the program, you know, you could buy, we don't know how it's going to be financed, but if they bought three pieces of property, each one to have 30 units on it, that could also eat up the whole $20 million. And to me, then it wouldn't meet any of the other objectives of the original reason we had the article in the first place. Because you'd be concentrating those developments in whichever neighborhood happened to be selected. So yeah, I would, I'm not sure $2 million is the number per unit, but I would rather buy individual units, I think that's the intent of the article, and we can find other ways to do these sort of pocket developments, $5 million, or go back to town meeting. I mean, town is really proposed to support what you're trying to do. And I just don't think you should divert an article that had a different intent.
Thank you. Dave?
Hi, Dave Averson. And all due respect to Rick, you know, I appreciate the article, appreciate all the work he's done. There's just a few things that, that, that I come up against. I mean, the original article was about getting safe harbor and 40Bs. And it does say properties, it doesn't say whether they're improved or not. So, and I hear what you're saying, Rick, that that wasn't your intention, but that is the way the article is written. The use of the word mini 40B, I don't know where that came from. None of us are looking to build, I don't know even sure what a mini 40B is, but, and when, when you look at our approaches, and it's the third one, the mini pocket developments that really get in a lot of people's craw, they're like, well, what are you trying to do? What we're trying to do with these three numbered approaches is to remain flexible and agile and to be able to react to whatever comes our way and not be pigeonholed and have to turn away properties that would work well for the purpose of shy units and affordable Our intention is to build at the underlying zoning, so we're not looking to go to the zoning board to look for any relief for anything. We're looking to build what's appropriate in neighborhoods, in existing neighborhoods under zoning. So I'm not really sure what the concern is. We're just trying to be responsible with the money the town's giving us. And I understand Rick's concern, but that's not the way the article was written, unfortunately. So, thank you.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around a former VinCom member and select board member arguing to spend money inefficiently. But, you know, Rick kind of glosses over the particulars. The particulars are very important. We have run these strategies by DHCD, and they have said, in effect, you would be rolling the dice, as Christie tried to point out, in a very big way, if you were to rely simply on the 11 different property strategy as your approach to staying in safe harbor at this next juncture. There are all kinds of associated aspects of doing that which are non-favorable, which I will not take time to go into detail. But there, you know, I think there is not enough credit, frankly, being given to the work of the Neighborhood First Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust in what their recommendations are. Their recommendations are very conscious of neighborhood and community. And as you can see, when you read the documents, they are saying, things need to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. What, you know, a 10-unit, for example, development in one location may be very appropriate. In another location, it may be wholly inappropriate. And because there are several layers of review and recommendation and consideration to moving forward with any particular thing, I have a high degree in confidence in the trust and in this board and the community overall in ending up with projects that we all can feel proud about. And there isn't one approach being recommended here. All, I mean, again, we need to hear a little better proposal on the buy-down aspect, but potentially, all three of these, and certainly the two principal ones, are going to be a part of where we go with this program. And I guess, it's been spoken to about the $5 million. I mean, if we want to do something that is very limited in income level, and it probably wouldn't be enough, frankly, the $5 million, to do what we needed, what Rick was suggesting we do in terms of 24 units, that's not enough to do a project the way that he is proposing it. We, it's in our interest, we think, to be doing things that are serving a variety of need across the island. Not everyone falls into 100% AMI or less. People struggle here at income levels significantly above that, and I think that's part of why the Neighborhood First limits were put up to 200% AMI. I guess finally, the chair had mentioned, there are some things that have already come our way and that are being looked at, and thus far, in every case, what is being looked at has existing units on it. It is not vacant land alone. And the original proposal that was laid out at town meeting with 11 different properties, there were not 24 existing units on those 11 different properties. The original proposal always contemplated building in order to meet the requirement for the safe harbor.
Any other questions?
I'm not making a comment on anything else, but I, you know, it's not often I say something like I'm going to say right now, but Mr. Howland just referred to a member, a former member of the Finance Committee, and said he was surprised about how that person has approached this. I've heard him mention that kind of thing before. I've read in the newspaper letters from Mr. Howland that I think castigate people unnecessarily. And, you know, I'm just here because I'm a little tired of it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I've just, I, I understand where Rick is coming from. I've also spoke to Tobias. Tobias has said that, you know, he's happy as long as, to me at least, he's happy as long as this keeps us in safe harbor, and he understands, there may, at least to me, he said he understands, there may have to be some larger, larger projects. But I think that, you know, Rick's point, and Tucker agreed, I think there has to be some small stuff too. There's going to have to be some small fill-in to make the number. If you can only get 21 units and you need 24 or 26, maybe that's the three-unit things. My other comment, the three-unit development, a 40B can be a single lot. It does, you know, 40B just means you're bypassing zoning. So if you go with a cottage development of, you have a half-acre lot and do four or six, you know, 700-square-foot cottages with shared parking, you might get eight units on something and not impact the neighborhood at all. So there's ways to use 40B. So I wouldn't be so constrained, I would hope this group isn't so constrained on their thinking, to say we can only do zoning, because zoning only allows you three, you don't get 25% on three. So I just think that you have to be thinking about it other ways, too.
If you use this, if you use properties in the CN zone, you can, you can do more.
Right.
And that, that's what has been pretty efficient, like with Seven Surfside. And because there were four, it's that really good layout where you do the 25% affordable, and then the others can be at different income levels as long as they're all rental. So it is pretty key to try and get four units on a property, and that's one zone where it's allowed under zoning.
But if you constrain yourself to CN, then you're only in CN, where there may be, I have a property on the corner of, you know, Rugged Road and Fairgrounds, that we put three cottages on, and you hardly know they're there, and it's very low impact on all the neighbors. And I could easily see another small cottage there. I just think that there's, you know, I think, and that would fit the intent that Rick is talking about of spreading this out, so you'd have, you know, three or four with, you know, one at 80% and the other three at different levels, and you could have shared parking and a really nice green space, and then do that in a couple other places. I think that there's, you know, I have faith in the group that's there, I think there's a good group. I think that, you know, if they don't do a good job, we're going to get blamed for it anyway. So hopefully, they'll do a good job, and I think that, you know, I, so anyway, I think that's, you know, and, you know, we're all fairly, I'm, at least I'm outspoken, I'm not going to, you know, prove something that's going to look terrible and be miserable. So I just think that we have to have a little bit of faith, but at the same time, I think there's some good points there. I also, the only other comment, and I've said this before, is a lot of the way, a lot of the tax credit stuff and all that, it's really complicated, they do it all a certain way. We should, we want to be, or we want the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be a co-partner or the general partner in these things, not just handing these off to someone else to do. You know, because then, you know, someone like down over here, they're going to, in two years, in year two, they're going to make their $5 million bucks, Hal Keenan, they're going to be out. They're going to still be managing it, but they make most of their money upfront with very little money down. You know, $500 million of their first money is what goes into the, you know, beginning and the legal and all that, and then they make their, a good amount of money right at the beginning. Half of that, if we were co-partners with them, especially since we put up land, half of that could be coming back to the trust fund. So I hope that, you know, there's things like that that we should be thinking about, and we should be thinking more like a businessperson would be thinking of developing than housing developers think of developing. You know, I'm not saying that in the, you know, I'm just trying to say it in a positive way, so.
So I'd like to respond to Mr. Atherton in that I think he said, you know, the details are out there. Well, that's what we've done, is we have, we have tried to evaluate as many of the details as we can, and the landscape is changing, and the details do matter, and the way we fit, as I keep referring to this as a puzzle together, is critical. And I, I want to reiterate our commitment to be fiscally responsible and respectful of what is appropriate on any particular site in any particular neighborhood. And we've all said this, and I think it just bears repeating at the end of this presentation, that that was, you know, a perceived understanding of the intent of the article, and we take that seriously. And I think that's what the community wants. I think that's what the community has placed their trust in us to do, and that is our intention. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that all of the minutes from the Neighborhood First are online, and Tucker did a really good job at the beginning explaining how every different process goes through the shy list and through DHCD. So if anybody wanted to read the minutes or watch the videos, we met once a month, and Tucker and Brooke did a really good job of explaining that process.
Thank you. Move on to public hearings. With a public hearing regarding the proposed FY 2021 general fund budget, I will open the public hearing.
Well, if there are no comments about the budget, it would be up to the board to endorse what was presented or modify it in some way. There is something that was brought up at your last meeting with regard to the Contract Review Committee's request to increase the allocation for Health and Human Services from $450,000 to $650,000. And I've talked that over with some of you, the Finance Director and I have talked about it. And what we would suggest, I guess, or propose, is that in order to, I think there's support for that request, so in order to fund it, we would suggest that for fiscal '21 only, we fund it with free cash, and going forward, we determine either through the expansion of the room occupancy tax revenue, as well as the marijuana tax, that we fund it that way going forward. Something that I talked a little bit to some of you about as well is, we would want to figure out maybe, is the 450 sort of the base that would be in the general fund, and the 200, the number going forward? And that's what we would find the funding for, not from free cash going forward? Or would we try to find the entire amount, you follow? We don't have to decide that now, but for '21, I think that could... think that could be a solution for that. And then the CRC could be tasked with, if that is your recommendation, providing recommendations for that additional 200 for town meeting. It's, of course, it would be subject to Finance Committee motion, but that would be put forward to them.
I, I would like to add the 200 out of free cash.
So, I think this is a great solution, just to get it going. Matt, you always talk about whether it's sewer fees or whatever is going up incremental. I mean, should we think about, maybe it's not this year, next year? You know, CRC, that funding goes up 5% every year.
Well, I think we should, but I think we should pick a cost-of-living number. And I think we have to do that on a lot of things now, because if the marijuana money comes in and some other money comes in, people are going to see that as, as just a pile of money. And, and they're going to think it all should be spent right away. And ideally, what you do is you put some of that into stabilization funds, and you put some away. So when there's a true need, you, you have it. You don't just, you know, you don't build your, you don't build your budget to meet your money. You build your budget for what you need. And then, you know, and so I, so back to, I think I was going to suggest just what you said, is, you know, sort of pick, if it's 600, that's fine, but then it goes up at 2.5 or 3% a year, not at whatever we happen to have. And I think that we have to be careful of, of making it, what's the word? I think we should look very unfavorably on stuff that doesn't go through a process, that comes in later, because that just means that we're going to get a lot more people coming in later. You know, if we, you know, if we go to town meeting and we, and we have to stand up and say, you know, you didn't go, I'm sorry, no matter what it is, you didn't go through the process, and, and the administration has to be, be comfortable to say no, and we have to be comfortable to say no, or we're going to get more of it. You know, so I, so there's a couple issues going on here. You know, I don't disagree with doing it right now. I know the need. But at the same time, I, I think we need to put sort of some, some guardrails on this, or it's going to become a runaway train. It's, it's like what you talked earlier about housing and everyone's already calling. They see the money and they're calling, and they're wanting, you know, too much for things. You know, we, we still have to be smart about how the money is spent, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to identify what the new revenue is to start from these two new sources. But, and I think we do need to put, put some money aside, because we may see a dip in, in our other revenues.
Well, we're going to. It's not a maybe.
Well, yes, we may, we will at some point.
On a yearly basis, we're spending new growth money for existing things. So when that new growth money slows or goes away, we're going to have to, you know, do a hiring freeze, or do a, you know, we're going to have to do things like that again, unless we budget within the number that's there. And so I just think it's not if, it's when, you know, it's going to happen unless we do, you know, unless we bargain differently and budget differently. It's guaranteed to happen. It's not a maybe.
Something to think about, you know, if we do do something like a 5%, I'm just using that number, increase to the base pay, like 450 each year. And then if time gets tough, maybe we, we stop the increase but not go down, because the problem is, working with Safe Place and Fair Winds over the years, when times are tough, those services are more in need than they are when times are good. And I, I could just see that being an easy thing to cut, the CRC, and I would like us, just throwing it out there, I would like us to never cut it. Maybe we stop the 5% base increase. But, you know, services go up in, in, in that area, in human services, in bad times.
Are there any other comments? Any comments from the public? This is a public hearing.
Did you guys discuss potential money for Harbor Place for that analysis?
Free cash.
That, is that, okay.
That is going to come up in the town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So, sorry. But yes, we did.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'll close the public hearing.
And make a motion to endorse the budget recommendations.
With the addition of the 200,000.
With the addition of the 200,000.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So just so.
Hang on, before, just so I'm sure, did I, did I just vote to override the Island Home?
No.
No.
I just want to make sure I didn't.
We just stuck that in there.
All right. No, I want to make sure I didn't, didn't make a mistake.
That's coming up next, though.
We'll talk about that in a minute, that's fine.
Okay, because that is associated with the budget.
I understand. So I'm gonna, you know, so I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm against it. So then I'm a negative on the budget because of that issue.
But they're not.
No, it's built in. It's not in this budget.
It's in the operating.
The Enterprise Fund budget of the Island Home, which you haven't seen yet, this is the General Fund, is, can, so actually, it's not really in the General Fund. That, that's true. It, it will be part of the Enterprise Fund recommendation.
All right, good. Then I'll stay with, I'm in favor.
So we're 5-0.
5-0. I'm in favor still, then.
It's tricky, because the budgets are so intertwined, because the Island Home is not a true Enterprise Fund budget. And it's going to require town meetings voting.
Okay, so we don't have anything under Town Manager's Report, under Select Board Reports and Comments, where continued review of 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant articles.
Okay, so what, this is a bit messy, because at this point in the process, things are coming in late or changed, or getting, not happening, or they're not ready, or whatever. So I was going to take you through the outline that was sent to you just the other day, outline number four, it's called. And what I'm trying to do is show what's changed in each of these outlines since your last discussion in bold text. So there's a couple things that have been added to the annual article section. And the first one is something that you already know about, that bold there, it doesn't have a number, but it would be an article for a transfer of appropriation and property conveyance for the acquisition of 24 Surfside that was already, I think, in your, in the real estate section. But there is an associated, it's not really an appropriation, it's a transfer of appropriation from the prior school authorization. So I just moved it really to the appropriation section. The other item that is not shown there that just came up yesterday is a proposed additional appropriation that would be a standalone article, and the number we discussed was about, was, I think, 150,000 for professional services in connection with the development of a development agreement for the Harbor Place property. And that would be, we had a meeting yesterday with the principals, owners of, of that property, and the discussion, we, I think everybody knows, we've been discussing this for several years now. They're going to come in with a presentation of the conceptual development.
Yeah, next week we'll have an overview of their proposal.
Yep.
And, and it would be also for consulting services to talk about a transportation center and infrastructure changes in that whole area.
Yeah, so as you know, we've done a engineering review of what it would take to address the improvements to the infrastructure and the, the potential, you know, expansion of some of the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, sewer, water, drainage. And that would need to be refined. And then if we're, you know, as we go down the road, that would be worked into a development agreement. But I think more will happen next week.
Yeah, and it's important, because I think when we are beginning to do the development agreement, we need to be able to have done our analysis and know what these things are going to cost, and be able to understand what, what does development paying, developers paying for, what is the town paying for, is it fair, what's the different aspects? I mean, I think it's very important that we have the, you know, the expertise and the help to do that properly, which is the goal of that article.
And to understand our full goals of what we want it to look like, in terms of community benefit. So, is everybody comfortable with that add-on?
Yeah.
Okay, next, I had a little subcategory called potential new appropriations, beginning in '21 or more likely '22. And we already know about the local marijuana sales tax. One of the things you talked about at a prior meeting was expanding the use of the so-called Special Fund for Substance Abuse programs to allow for mental health programs as well. And that's worked into an article now, and it was approved by Town Council. The short-term rental tax proceeds, we had talked at your last meeting about establishing a similar special fund as the marijuana tax, but this would, would require a home rule petition for some of that money to be dedicated to specific purposes. And some of those purposes that have been discussed are shown there in our TAA Year-Round Service Housing, Water Quality Strategic Plan, priorities, capital projects, perhaps, infrastructure, things of that nature. I don't know that you need to decide that right now, but we might want to get the home rule petition underway, because in '22, we will have a full year behind us of the receipts, and we'll know more what we're actually likely to receive going forward.
Just a question on that, Libby, do we have to do a, you know, a home rule and a special fund, or can we just, you know, segregate it ourselves and say, like?
We're not allowed to.
We're not allowed to just put it in a separate bank account and say, we're only spending this?
It requires a, it requires.
So you have to do something like a stabilization fund?
Yes, and you could, we could do that, but the stabilization fund criteria restricts how much you can put into it. And then, this would be a special stabilization fund, actually, but without the restrictions of the Mass General, that allows you to do it without a home rule petition.
And without, and you, you require a 2/3s vote still, look at this, yeah, okay. Yeah, well, that's something for, for everyone to think about, is if you're setting it aside and need 2/3s to get it back up. Is that what you really want to do? So.
Otherwise, it go, I mean, it otherwise goes into the General Fund, and it's harder to, you know, dedicate it to certain things, but it could potentially be done that way as well, without a home rule petition at all. But it just changes from, you know, board to board, FinCom to FinCom. It's harder, harder to be consistent.
If we have the home rule petition in, and we look at the receipts from the first year, do we have to, we don't have to set up the stabilization fund? We can decide.
We would be authorized to set up.
We would be authorized to do it, okay.
So, yeah, so we could get the home rule petition underway. There, there are other towns that are doing similar home rule petitions like this. I think Province Town may have done one, and/or Sandwich.
And is the, the, the money that goes into the stabilization, stabilization fund, does it have to be used for once-off projects, or is it something, so thinking about some of the ongoing funding, can a certain amount be allocated every year to a specific thing?
Well, that would be something I think you would potentially talk about annually.
Okay.
Like funding bus service?
Yeah. Or, or you would say, we're going to fund bus service only, or this amount of bus service, and then that number goes forward annually with, you know, probably a CPI or whatever operational increases there might be.
Requiring a 2/3s vote every year.
So whatever we would decide, it'd be something that would be, everybody, it'd be a no-brainer, right? Whether, that's why I think Infrastructure Capital Stabilization Fund makes sense, somewhere, like a rainy day fund. You put it away, and you don't really touch it until it's needed.
I mean, we talked a lot when this tax was being proposed, and about it really going towards addressing some of the bigger problems, like housing and infrastructure and things that are really impacted by the sort of summer travel, that's, that's the main industry of the island. And I don't, I don't really want to see it get lost in the General Fund. I want to see people have that path of, it is being directed towards solving some of those transportation, environmental, and housing issues that we have. So, I mean, I'd like to see 50% get dedicated.
Yeah, and I think having the option open is great, but I would tend towards saying it would end up being a stabilization fund, as opposed to going into the General Fund. And the 50%, though, we don't have to define right now which way it goes. It's just 50% goes into this fund. That's the home rule petition.
Yeah, I'd have to look back at what the wording is right now, but it, I think it was 50, right, at the moment. But we need to figure out what the 50 is of. It, it's probably not of, well, this is another reason to understand what we're going to be receiving annually, because we already work in
Right.
a certain amount into the General Fund. So we don't want to really reduce that.
I don't think that we would at 50.
Yeah.
Based on the projections of the numbers.
Exactly.
I think there would still be, there will still be money above what we were receiving when it was just hotel tax, basically.
So that's what we want to focus on.
Yeah.
Just if you want consensus, I think everybody was happy with
Yeah, fine.
Some, some type of stabilization fund.
Yeah.
That, what you said, Dawn, I'm sorry, connected to what the, what the, where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I'm not too worried. We have enough expenses, sewer alone, we have enough expenses in the next 20 or 30 years that, you know, so.
Okay, just a couple things that have already been mentioned, but now they're in the draft warrant, the Land Bank request for a warrant article seeking the town's full faith and credit for the additional 25 million that they are requesting. They have asked for the Board's support of that article. In addition to just putting it in, they would like some active support. I have not had a chance to talk with Finance Director about whether or not he had some concerns or questions about that, and I'm, I'm just not sure if they've been answered yet. But like, your last meeting, you all said we would support it and put it in if the questions can be answered to his satisfaction. So I'm just kind of waiting to hear back on that.
Yeah, he had bond questions, right?
Yes, yep. And then a late article came in, additional, well, late to me, anyway, additional authorization for an additional 2 million for the Septic Betterment Loan Program. We, this is probably the, where's Roberto still here? The, I'm sorry.
He's hiding in the back.
This is the third renewal, maybe? Okay, thank you. Okay, and so you all know how it works. It, it, the town, we get a loan, we issue the funds, and the people over time pay back. But it's popular, so. So that's just, that's in now. Zoning Bylaw and General Bylaw Amendments. We have, I think, a final updated list from planning as to the zoning articles, and I think they've pretty much all been reviewed already. Andrew, I don't know if there were new ones in that list. It was hard to track. But you have a list, I think, that was sent to you. And Andrew's here to answer any questions that you might have.
My only question was just, we had, they had given us a list about a month ago, and just making sure that it was roughly the same list, that there weren't any additions, so, yeah.
There might have been one, was there some driveway thing? Modification to driveway access to clarify the HCC approval is required for driveways. I think that, was that new? Sort of?
New-ish.
New-ish.
It was the one that, there was a placeholder in it that said Holly was working on it, and that was that, so.
Okay, so that's been.
We should have that tomorrow.
Okay, so that, that's in. That was the one now.
I have a, a quick question, and maybe we can't answer it tonight, but I actually, I think some of the, the curb cut issues we've seen have gone the other way, where people have gotten HDC approval for a driveway, but they actually don't have curb cut approval from DPW. Do we, is that something that we have addressed or fixed?
I think it might be possibly, is it the other way around?
They have to have both.
Yeah.
I would say, only because I did get HDC approval once for a driveway that didn't have appropriate curb cut myself.
Okay.
And we saw that come up recently.
Well, so there's the, the two steps, yes. And if people were to proceed with their curb cut without having gone to DPW, then that's a problem, and that's.
That's one that we haven't really addressed yet.
Well, it's, it's required now, and we were talking about having more, having stronger regulations about that, so that is not done yet. But there is a policy in place.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, anything to add about zoning? Andrew? No? Okay. All right, the General Bylaw Amendments. There's a couple that are not going to progress at this point. Underground wiring bylaw, potential amendments. We, we talked about this early on, and it's just something we have not really been able to focus on. So that, that is going to come back at a future town meeting. The Clear Rules for Construction Sites, same thing. Same thing with clarification to display of merchandise and wares. We do have a stormwater bylaw that's been prepared by Town Council that is in, that will allow the town to adopt regulations relating to stormwater enforcement issues and things like that. This will give us the authority to. This will give us the authority to do that. I, I've had this ongoing item in here, sync town bylaws regarding bicycles with state law, which was prepared and it's in, but now I'm told it's not recommended by V P A C. And I probably have some email that explains that, but I, I don't know. I haven't gone to it yet. Do, do you know about that?
Credit from Rahmat, but I think it was, once we got into it, we thought if it goes to town meeting floor and somehow is on the warrant before the other bicycle articles, it'll be confusing. People will wonder why we're doing it. It, it'll just kind of spiral out of control. It, it, it's not really necessary. It was more just trying to, just trying to clean it up.
Yeah, it's cleanup, it's cleanup that could go next year and, you know, we have 50-something citizen articles. You know, we have 50-something citizen articles and a bunch of other things. It's just no need for it to do, go this year.
It might be confused with the other.
Yeah.
Bike-related articles, so, because it wasn't, we checked the public safety. Is there any issue? Do we, do you need this now or like, we don't need it at all? So we're going to wait a year or so?
Okay, so I'll put that in my next year's file. Amendments to the plastics ban bylaw. So we have a town, an article that town admins worked on, which basically just clarifies the existing bylaw. For example, it's in the draft warrant that I sent you all, but there's a couple of confusing things, like it, it talks about banning flexible plastic yolks for six-packs. That's not exactly what the words are, but it mentions six-pack. So that's not a four-pack, that's not a two-pack, it's not an eight-pack. So it's only six and there's lots of flexible pass, plastic yolks that are more than six or less than six. So we want to clarify that it's, there's no number. They're just banned. Now, there is a citizen petition that has been submitted by Bruce Mandell that has a number of additional items that he is proposing to ban. And we've talked about it a little bit about, at our plastics work group. And I think the general consensus has been, we haven't even started this ban yet. It starts June 1st, 2020. We ought to make sure we are able to enforce it and administer it before we start adding more items. Some of the items that Bruce has put in are probably items that we will look to ban in the future. But he has specifically requested, I'll just read a little email that I got from him. Is there any way the select board can take my citizen's article and make it one of theirs? He took a shot at it because he was unsure the board would do it and the deadline for citizens' articles was fast approaching. And so he would like you to consider that. I would respect what he's trying to do very much and he has a very, very strong commitment to this and a lot of really excellent reasons as to why. I don't want to discount that at all, but there's a lot of things in his article that would be really difficult to enforce, even though I think his article says it wouldn't go into effect till 2022. It's a lot. But I told him I would bring it for his request forward. If it's not going to.
Do we have his article that we could?
Um, can you pull up the citizen articles or no?
If he doesn't want it to go into effect till 2022, why wouldn't we go through a season of the 2020 and do this?
I think he wants people to start getting used to the idea.
I just think.
It could potentially be refined for a fall. I just.
I'm just a little worried about how overwhelming it's going to be to get rid of the, like, get used to the first grouping.
Exactly, and we've spent a lot of time doing public outreach and discussing this with a lot of groups and it is going to be challenging already.
Matt, I think, I think that's my concern. I'm probably, if I really dug into what Mr. Mandell was adding, I'm probably for it. But I, I saw over this last year and a half, how much work went into trying to get everybody on board and educating everyone. And then, like you said, let's see what happens this summer and the unintended consequences, good or bad. So maybe in the fall. I, I'm going to speak for everybody. I think we're all, we're all for this idea.
Yeah.
But I, I saw how much work it was. I attended a couple of the, the plastic ban meetings.
I think having it as a citizen warrant article will keep the conversation going. I think we've made a lot of headway with businesses.
So just go down to the, yeah.
And I think continuing to foster the, I think what's become a fairly positive relationship would be important before launching into the next one, although I would agree and it would be great to see these be included, but I think we can consider that in the autumn as well, so.
Keep, keep going. It's down, his list of items is.
Even right off the bat, flushable wipes. No wipes are supposed to be flushable.
Yeah.
Right, they're not.
David will definitely appreciate getting rid of those wipes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good list. It's an aggressive list and it's definitely in keeping with our idea around environmental leadership. But I, I do think we are, you know, 80% of the way through this first round with businesses. And I, I would like to see us get that in place, work on enforcement and then take the next step.
I think we should make that as a recommendation. I, if that's what we feel, I, I think we should make as a recommendation. As someone who's, you know, changing their business based on this, it's going to be very difficult for the haulers this year, for all the businesses that are doing it, you know, and I think as long as it's, everyone is treated fairly and the same, no problem. But, you know, and the other problem I have just with this plastic thing in general is that, you know, the, we're asking everyone to go to biodegradable plastic, which is going to act exactly the same in our landfill. It's not going to digest, it's going to sit there for, you know, hundreds of years until, you know, until the water washes it away because the sea level rise and we're going to, you know, so I, I just think that we, this is, this feels good and it's a step in the right direction, but it's not the solution. It's, it's getting us down the path, but I think we, we shouldn't be naive and think that the corn cellulose, you know, biodegradable are actually biodegrading. They're not. And so, you know, so I think, so then I think there needs to be more work on what's the right thing to do, really. You know, so. And we all think that we're going to, we also think that all the recyclables are recycled across the country. It's one of the, there was a great article in the New York Times. It's one of the biggest scams ever. You know, hardly any of it really was recycled. It's such a, it's like 4%, 3% nationwide, worldwide, even when China was taking everything, ever got recycled. It was a way for, you know, for companies to sell their product and make you think it's okay. And it, you know, so, so we really, there's a lot more to this.
And what I really liked in the original article and as we've been presenting to businesses is everything that is going into effect this year has a replaceable. So you can have a reusable water bottle, you can have the compostable K cups. Whereas a lot of these items, it's not necessarily on the market yet. And I know that sometimes the policy needs to come before, but I think when it's affecting so many businesses and, it's going to be a lot harder to implement even with the two-years band. But I like having it on the radar so we can start thinking about it. And every business that we've met with has said, I want to comply with the plastics ban. How do I? And so I think if we had something like this, that says one day we might do this, they're going to start thinking about it.
Something else to think about, I, I don't even know if this is, if this would happen. When I look at a list like this, I just have to think of, it will be replaced with more expensive items. And I think of people who are middle, lower class, maybe don't have a lot of money, maybe would not be able to afford it. So where are they, do they go to Amazon? What are those kind of effects? Just knowing, looking to replace things in my small business, the extra cost. So when I look at, you know, shampoo and, you know, soda and expanding, I just think about all levels of income for certain families and would that affect them or not? Maybe not in the day of Amazon. I'm not, I'm not sure.
It won't. They're just going to buy it from Amazon.
Elderly, maybe you don't order from him. I'm just trying to put another layer on this.
And if you order from Amazon, you go against what we're trying to do is stop bringing it to Nantucket. So it kind of goes against it.
Sounds like a decline to support, to sponsor his article for him.
Yes, an appreciation, I think an appreciation for it and I think it's good to have it on the table, but.
Well, we should write a comment on it. Like that's, we have, we have the ability. The FinCom writes it, the, you know, zoning writes it, Planning Board writes it, but we can, you know, we can write something saying, while we support this in, in general, we think the implementation, you know, we will look at which ones of these, we would like the plastic groups to work, look at what things are, make sense for future. I think that should be some sort of comment in there.
I agree.
And I don't want to forget that because this is all coming very quickly.
Yeah.
To bring back another version, a future date.
Yeah, just some comment, yeah, but we need to make sure we write the comment.
Got it. Okay, the historical commission bylaw amendment request. This came up very late as well. You discussed it at your last meeting. It does need some work. I've asked town council to look at it. I don't know if we're going to be able to make it work before you need to adopt this. We did talk about, could we work on it a little more? Because it probably has some input from other departments, which it doesn't have a chance of having right now. But could we do this in the fall?
Well, I, I think, I think they've, they were trying to work within the process. They've brought it, I think, to M P D C or Planning Board, starting, I think, September, October time. And so I think that this is something, so I'd like to see if we could work on it and get it in myself.
It seems a little tight, but town council has it.
And we have, we have until when to decide on this one?
The 22nd.
22nd.
We, I need a pretty solid article by next week to get the warrant done. We get a lot of articles and they are, you know, there's a lot of other things going on too, to deal with.
Matt, you said it was sort of within the process, but it came to us quite late?
I'm not sure. It, it has been discussed at a couple, a couple of places prior to us anyway, but I don't know, you know, and, and I've got questions, I've got questions about some of the other things that we, like, what is our process going to be on sewer connections? And some of the other stuff that we have to recommend because I think what's happening is, Fin, you know, FinCom is assuming we're doing something, Planning's assuming, you know, is it Planning Board's assuming we're doing a certain review? And then we're assuming they are and then it's, you know, it comes to us and we're going, well, wait a minute, should we do that one or not that one? I just think, and I don't have the answer to it. I brought this up, you know, last time we met. I just think there's, there's a lot there and I'm with Libby, where it's overwhelming right now trying to say, how are you going to, you know, vet these properly? You know, sort of this, I, I sent an email, you know, about the citizen zoning articles. We give them a form that they fill out and they answer all the questions, but nobody answers what's the financial impact. And, and that's our, that's the finance department are our job. Well, are we going to answer that prior to town meeting? I don't see that happening. You know, so anyway, so I don't know how to get to that and to, you know, I, I blame myself. I haven't been able to sit down to really sort of look at which articles and what are the, you know, I haven't done the analysis, but I don't know that it's any one individual's job to sit down and analyze these things. You know, and if we aren't analyzed properly, we should just give, anything that's not analyzed properly should get a note.
Well, the zoning, the Planning Board will make a recommendation on and they'll look over, like, with a zoning change, if additional lots can be created and those kind of things. And they'll, they'll let, like, that'll be said. But I'm, I have a little bit harder time when it's not a citizen's article and it's something that we have, that we're sponsoring, that we absolutely need to understand the full impact and. Holly?
Hi, Holly Backus, Preservation Planner. On behalf of the Historical Commission, this is something that they've been working on. They understand that there are some items that need to be flushed out. I did mention to them that this, there's some language we need to make sure, definitions. So I, I couldn't say that, and I won't speak for the, the commission, but they, they're wanting some feedback. If this is something that we all feel that this should be moved to a later date, that's great. I think there's some professional expertise that we need to reach out to find out what we're doing. I did take the initiative to reach out to some other historic districts within the Commonwealth to see what they're doing, not reinventing the wheel again. And it is a conversation of what other places have been doing. Some places have been able to just go towards their guidelines and some other places haven't been able to really find the niche for it. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm here, you know, on, on their behalf, so, any questions?
I mean, they probably don't, don't know and we haven't officially determined it, but there are a number of things that are pointing us towards probably having a fall town meeting. So it's not pushing it off a whole year if we need to work on things a little bit more.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Matt, I, I spoke to the chair of N H C this week and she sent me some of this and I, I looked at it a little bit. I feel like I need a little more time and the fall would be great in concept. I, I like, I think it makes sense. And I like that Holly's, you know, as a preservation planner now can has, you know, time, some time to dig into this. But I, I do like that they tried to go through and ask the select board to sponsor it and not just throw it in as a citizen warrant article.
Yeah, I do too.
I really do appreciate that. So that makes it, it's more collaborative. So I support it, but think maybe, you know, after hearing Holly in the fall.
I would, again, on first read generally be supportive of it, but I would like some feedback from town council and D P W, anyone else that we need feedback from before committing to sponsoring it ourselves. And I don't know if we can get that by the 22nd.
Yeah, and really by the 15th.
Yeah, we're not going to have to.
It's tighter than that.
We need a departmental review, yeah, but town council perhaps, but there may be other things beyond town council that just need to get understood.
It could be put in as a placeholder, but then we're rushing to try to understand it by the first week of April. Because if we're sponsoring, I have, I feel like I need to be able to talk about it fully.
Yeah, and I, I feel bad sponsoring it and then tabling it. I'd rather be sure that it's written, that it's crafted exactly how we want it from, from the beginning, especially if we're gearing up towards the fall. It's not pushing it off as far. Are we going to be discussing this next week as well? Like, could we hear back from town council and then make a decision?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying it's not just town council that I would want to have, take a look at it to understand the full impact. But I expect to have something from him before the end of this week, so you can talk about it again next week.
Yeah, let's talk about it once we see it.
Yeah, I want to process it a little bit more. Sounds good.
Okay, we have a new sewer district addition for the Sconset Sewer District that came from Plus. I've looked at it, but I haven't really had a chance to talk to Andrew about it.
So, thank you, board. And first of all, this isn't from me. It's from me in that I'm helping other departments write the articles that are necessary. So this particular parcel is not included in the sewer district. You can see on the map the hatched areas and over the holidays, basically, a application for subdivision of this property came in. You can see it's outside of the sewer district, including some sort of sewer on this property is an important consideration. David Gray came to me about this as well as our consultants. And we can't require sewer if the property's not in the sewer district. So it's late breaking because, again, we don't control what happened here and it's really important that we include this moving forward.
Are they able to, is it a case of they can increase the number of units if they're on sewer in this situation?
No, and I want to make it clear that we're not, it's never been the intent to use sewer to control development. But what's important here is that this property can be developed without sewer and it will be on septic, very close to the well field. You see the, the, the purple dot there is the well field and that's up gradient of it. The property should be included in, no matter, you know, as long as it's going to be developed and you can see the other properties, like the, that's a cluster development next to it. Those are all included in the district. This one was held out really because it was uncertain what was going to happen here. You know, it could, it could have just maybe gone to conservation and there was no need to put it in. But now that it's moving forward with a subdivision application, any new homes that are constructed in there, it's important that they're on sewer.
If we didn't, then it would just be a case of they're each going to have an I A system.
Yeah, we can't, we can't require sewer as one of the conditions if it's, if it's not possible.
Just to the right is Sconset Trust land, the stairs, steps there.
Yes.
Sconset Trust, yeah.
To the east, that's the right, and to the north is all Sconset Trust, as well as the part of the land to the back. So most, all the other land is, as you said, in conservation or in a higher density zoning district. I mean, I'm sorry, a lower density zoning district. All the land to the west.
Why isn't Hydrangea Lane on sewer?
It is, it's just the, those.
This is the open space areas that isn't included.
Right, the cluster, the open space area is not included, but where the houses are is included. Do you see those little clusters?
Because the back portion of it, Sconset Trust actually has a restriction.
When did they do their cluster? When did that happen? That subdivision?
Hydrangea?
Yeah, next door.
Thank you, Holly.
A while back, yeah.
And what's the size of that lot?
Of, of the one that we're including? Let's see, it's.
It's 316, 69. So what is that, seven acres?
That sounds right.
Rita, are you trying to ask how many houses can go in without sewer? How many houses can go in with sewer? Just to know?
Yeah, well, I'm just, again, just trying to get an idea of if there, maybe there is no difference at all, how many IA systems are there.
Right now, there's a, it's a four lot subdivision, so the existing property, developed portion of the property would be put on its own lot and three lots in, in between. They're proposed at 40,000 square feet. It's a half acre zoning district, so it's possible, there could be more, but with that comes higher level of road improvements and other things. So again, we're, we're at the early stages here.
And they each have, they would each have their own septic as well. It's not a situation where sometimes they're shared ones, they, each lot would have its own.
Each lot would have its own.
So if the Board's okay with it, this will go to the review group, which is working on its review, and you will have a public hearing in February on all the sewer districts.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I think it should, I think it should be reviewed. I think it probably will be fine. But I think it's, it's important to understand what was in was in, what was out was out. The place, most, and the places that needed it at the time, based on the, you know, flow, based on the criteria, you know, sort of on the harbor, next to the ponds, low water table, those places were all added at the time for sewer. And we have to be very careful. This is why, you know, I wonder when we have the discussion of it, we have to be very careful. It's, you know, some, people want to be on the sewer because it gives them, you know, other benefits, but we have X amount of capacity and we have, and X amount of dollars and we have to spend more if we're putting, if we're sewer-ing things we don't need to sewer. It's not, we probably, we really shouldn't be doing that. You know, we have sand and it does, it does clean, clean well and it takes care of it. There's a lot of places that really don't need to be on sewer, and so we have to, you know, it's, it's not a simple, everything on sewer is better. That's all, you know, and that's, you know, anyway.
Yeah, I would like to see the review, and I don't know, maybe David can answer, but the other houses across the street that are right next to the well, they're, they're not on sewer?
Those aren't houses, Rita, those are the Water Company property. So.
It's the old softball field, right? Right next to it?
Yeah.
Other side, yeah.
All the houses that are around it were included in the sewer district over time. There needs to still be infrastructure constructed, which this group could contribute to, as well as the Hydrangea next door. And again, if this weren't an essential piece, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be here asking for it, so.
Yeah, the, the one thing David Gray, Sewer Director, that we're afraid of is another cluster like the Hydrangea where they have one septic system for the whole cluster. They're having trouble finding people to operate it and maintain it. And they've come forward to us before about trying to get sewer to serve their lots, so.
Yeah, but why, they're not in the sewer, that's what I asked.
They're in the sewer district, but they don't have sewer yet.
Oh, they just haven't hooked up to it?
There, there's no infrastructure there, that's part of the plan, and we're going through the CWMP to taking all those lots around the wells.
Yeah, because I thought that they had a shared septic.
They have a shared septic, but they were, I believe in the plan, they had to put dry sewer in, so I think the sewer in the streets, in Hydrangea.
But there's nothing.
But there's nothing in the main yet. We don't have the other stuff constructed yet, so.
Thank you.
Now, if this one went on the sewer district, would that help fund getting the connection so that Hydrangea would get connected too?
Yes.
So that would be a positive?
The Hydrangea Homeowners Association representatives have, have basically offered to, you know, contribute towards the funding, based on what David had talked about, is that their existing joint system is difficult to maintain.
Yeah.
Maybe not functioning as well as it should. So it's, it's in everybody's interest to get those properties hooked into sewer, being so close to the well field.
And then you have the, the Plainfield area up in the back and Windsor, those are all added. Some of Windsor is now sewed all the way back down through Brunel, but Plainfield is still in the sewer district, but they're not connected to sewer. We need a way to get to Plainfield, so another thing that we were looking at is to be able to come down the milestone and get an easement through all the way over towards Plainfield to serve those areas. So we're just trying to put the pieces of the puzzle together so we can have everything, either get into sewer at some point, but everything can connect down through, back to the plant, which is down in the bottom corner, you can't even see it. So we also have a CWMP, WMP underway in Sconset now, which is listing all these properties. And so we have all the flow totals. Now it's just a matter of getting the study done and then finding out what we need to do for infrastructure. But almost all of New Street that goes up towards the old water tower, that, they're in the district, but there's no sewer up there yet. And it's all directly across the street from the wells.
And the, and the details on this is how do, if you're doing it, do you, you know, does the development pay, or how do you better it and everything else? You know, a lot of times there's the push to, just to put it on the sewer base, but we've had instances like on Hummock Pond Road, where the developer paid for how many, a mile of work, I mean, or half a mile of sewer because it was so worth it to him to, you know, to be able to build out a lot that he had. So we really, you know, we can't shy away from, you know, bettering people or, you know, having them come back and build this thing. I mean, this, we have enough expenses as it is, so, you know, it's sort of, there's a couple of things going on here, and we have to be smart about it to, you know.
There's a lot of things going on, and during the Shimmer Project, we did some betterments for some drainage that worked beautifully. I mean, it's, so it's, it can be done, it's just a matter, we're, we're trying to spearhead that now more so, so.
Thank you.
In a situation like this, there's a lot of value being created, that we can capture some of it by asking them, asking the people that are benefiting to, you know, contribute. What, and people complain about, you know, the 16,000 and the privilege fee and this and that, that's about one quarter of the actual cost. You know, so people are up in arms and complaining, but it's, they're getting subsidy, half of, they're getting what, 50%, 75% subsidy, and they're complaining. And I understand it's expensive, I didn't want to pay, I haven't liked paying it myself, but it's, you know, that's the reality, is it's very, this stuff is not cheap, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I don't know, Andrew, if you want to stay up for marijuana bylaw amendments. So the Cannabis Advisory Committee has submitted some bylaw amendments, and there's kind of some issues with some of it. There's, there's one or two, I'm not even clear, on zoning. And they submitted one, a general bylaw amendment that relates to licensing, but Town Council's reviewed it and it's really not in the proper form, and what it really needs to be is a regulation, not a bylaw. So we're working on, so I don't think we're going to need that article. And we'll have Town Council work on regulations, which we've had for some time now, which I was hoping the committee would review and probably comment on. And I think there was an attempt to do that, but it became a bylaw, which it doesn't need to be. So we're going to bring it back to be a regulation and the Board can adopt it. But I'm not sure what the zoning stands.
Well, there was some confusion about who generated those articles. We, we didn't know if Town Council had helped them, which I learned that they didn't.
Correct.
And so it's on my list with Leslie to go over. So the, the Planning Board has only had a general discussion with representatives from that committee, but.
Okay, so there may be a zoning article or two, I don't know, gone, coming from them, but not a general bylaw?
It's really for the craft cooperative, these are concepts that we've talked about before, but, you know.
I'm on the Marijuana Advisory Committee, called Cannabis, CAC, and we, we are trying to think through where cultivation would be and zoning. I think one, one of the things Town Council said, and I read that email, was it's already there for cultivation, but we, so we haven't got on the phone with Katie Loff and really dug into it. Yeah, I don't want to speak for Barry, I, I didn't get to talk to him this week, but it make, I think it makes sense to, you know, push it to next year or the fall if we can't get it figured out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Like, two weeks?
Or, or two days. But I think getting with, getting with, with Town Council on the phone.
Yeah.
Whether it was Barry and you and Leslie to get it figured out. If there's not time, then push it forward, because Act Natural's not going to be open until the summer, and we don't, you don't even know if we even need it, and it's, it's, there's cost prohibitive issues and, so we have time.
Have there been people coming looking for cultivation licenses?
I had someone ask me about it.
People are asking, talking about it, yeah.
And so, but the, the point being that that wouldn't necessarily need to be a bylaw, that we could work through that as a licensing regulation?
Correct.
Okay. And then the zoning article is something different?
Yeah, zoning article is either, you know, it's generally definitions and amending the use chart to say where it can be allowed.
So, so right now, it would be allowed wherever the retailer medical is?
Right, on site.
Yeah.
And I think the intent was to expand that and allow opportunities in, you know, more rural type districts.
Yeah.
And I think there were, there were discussions about canopy and other things that sort of say where that might be.
Right. I don't know if that could still, the zoning part, still, if we have time for that or not.
It's relatively straightforward, so.
They had like 11 different categories for sizes or something, it was like.
Yeah. And is it mostly, are we talking about indoor growing, or has there been a discussion about sort of open field agriculture zoning or anything?
I don't think the state is allowing.
The state isn't allowing that yet.
Open growing, as, as of right now, for just cultivators, not that I know of. Do you know of any?
No, I, I, I haven't looked at it since really last year, and I know that's been an ongoing discussion, and there's been that line drawn between hemp and cannabis. So, no, I was just wondering if we were discussing really purely, if we were discussing purely indoor grow, which it sounds like we are.
Okay, move on?
Move on, but with maybe, just to see if there's any, the zoning can still go in or not, is that where we're leaving it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, home row petitions. We have the, the three that are going forward, again, which have already been through multiple town meetings, and we have some new ones. One with the land, one involving land bank land that is needed for the future Milestone Rotary Project, and I'm, we're working through whether or not that'll be ready for town meeting. That might have to go the fall, but it might be able to go forward. The potential charter amendment, home row petition for the airport regarding capital project funding approval, we have, we have that in. I, I have some notes there, placeholder now, needs legal review, oh yeah, legal review complete, will be a home row petition. So just, you've all talked about this before, I didn't hear anyone say do not put it in, so.
It's a great idea.
In?
Yes.
In.
Yeah.
Okay, home row petition and charter change for the Audit Committee, this is in. I need a little bit of formatting done by the Government Study Committee, which is coming. Home row petition from Planning, I know you wrote this for others, but something, I, I didn't know how to describe this.
So this is the same, this is, I guess I would call it a cousin of the issue with the Milestone Rotary. So when you use land that's been set aside or purchased for open space purposes, for non-open space purposes, you need to get a home row petition to allow it. So in this case, and we included the topo so you could get an idea of, there's drainage coming down off this hillside towards Angola Street, and the two parcels outlined are owned by the land bank. The DPW Director and I had a conversation with the land bank director and to explore the concept of installing underground utilities under that area. So it would maintain its current look and, you know, as a garden and open space area, but it would be performing some needed drainage function. In order to advance that, we would need to get approval, because we're, again, using part of the property for the drainage-related purpose. So, and one thing on the earlier one, if you remember, we actually have front-loaded some parcels that we have authority already to, to, to grant to the land bank. So it's, we did that on purpose so we wouldn't have to wait for, you know, a whole bunch of other things to move forward. So it's just a matter of getting, you know, having a discussion about what those parcels are and, and moving that forward.
You're not swapping, the towns, is the town swapping something for this?
We haven't discussed that.
No, that, this should be, I wouldn't think that this would be a swap myself. It's going to be, you know, it, it's going to be a benefit to the town and it's not going to change their use at all. I mean, I even think, anyway, we'll see.
Is it stormwater septers underneath?
I believe so, right?
Yeah.
And what this does point out, like when we talk about sort of, should we get rid of this next to the water or next to the pond or whatever, this is the process sometimes to go to the state. You know, once you've given it away and put it in, put it in this, you know, once you've sold it to somebody else, you have to buy it back or take it back, or once you've given it to the land bank, you have to go to the state and have the, have it released, which is why sometimes I ask, geez, do we need this road that we're giving to land bank for anything else? Andrew, no, we don't, okay. You, you want to think ahead of like, is there a potential need? Now, I don't think we, anyone really thought of it when we did this, which is fine, I'm not.
Well, we didn't give this to them, they bought this on, on the open market.
But, but I'm just saying, you have to sort of, this is a process to get this stuff back.
Yeah, and we've, we've been, we heard you on that. We've been including the ability to put underground utilities and other things when we, when we sell, or when we convey properties over to them.
And I'm sort of giving more of an object lesson of why I asked that question. This is a good example of, of that.
And so generally, it would be possible if before the land bank closes on things, where maybe we would need drainage or a sidewalk, that we could get that in place ahead of time, even if it's not a property that we're giving to them.
Right, and typically, you know, a good example where that was done was the property at the corner of Union and Washington, where those things were spelled out in advance.
Right.
The problem with Milestone, unfortunately, the timing didn't work on that.
Right.
Which is why we have to go back and, and do this, which is unfortunate. But it's also the reason why we got advanced approval for a whole list of parcels. And again, you have the opportunity before those are conveyed to put easements and restrictions that you want on them.
This works for me.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so that does need to be written, right Andrew, or did you already write it?
Already written.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, it's not in, it's not in yet?
It's not in the board.
Okay, do I have it? Okay. All right, MGL acceptances. This first one, we've talked about a bit, Minnesota Water Infrastructure Investment Fund, the WIF, and I've talked with some of you about this. There's, there's some understandable confusion out there and on the Board about the differences between the Cape and Islands Waste Water Protection Fund and the WIF, and we're not prepared to sort this out at town meeting. And we, we, we've talked to, I've talked to some of you this week about some things like, we need a good, understandable, side-by-side comparison of what the two funding sources, how they work, what they do, what they can fund, what it takes to approve them and use them. Are there any project limitations? We need to look at something Matt brought up quite a while ago, what's, how does it, how do they compare with regard to projects and borrowing capacity and impact on sewer What's, how do they compare with regard to projects and borrowing capacity and impact on sewer user face, things like that? That work is going to take some time to do. The Towness Sandwich had a very extensive public outreach program for the WIF that they adopted. And they're so far the only town that's adopted it. Dennis, I believe, may have passed their town meeting, but it hasn't passed a ballot yet. So we would want to take a look at what the sorts of things they do. We probably need a little bit of a work group that has somebody from FinCom on it, one of you probably, maybe some people from the public, to really help vet out what this is and what it could do. So I guess we're just not ready.
Can I ask, the Cape Towns, they have to do the Cape and Islands Waste Water Protection Fund. So are they doing the WIF in addition to that or no?
Sandwiches.
Sandwiches.
But they don't have to do it. They can opt out.
They can opt out. Okay.
They, you know, there's a big effort not to have towns opt out. So there's another, oh, did I introduce this? There's another general law acceptance that I got from Planning about a part-time building inspector. And I think it's just a housekeeping thing when you have a part-time building inspector, which we do. You're supposed to have this general law accepted, which we didn't. So it's covering that. Real estate, this was already in. I was just mentioning that land bank, Milestone Rotary thing may or may not be ready. 24 Surfside is in the works to get ready. Other drones, at this point I can't remember what we were going to do there, so that hasn't gone anywhere. Ballot questions. So this is where we have the potential operating override for our Island Home. Your meeting next week, Brian and I are working on a brief PowerPoint to show you what our recommendations are going to be for funding sources for the capital projects. So free cash debt exclusions, capital exclusions, and some reappropriations. And the minimum capital funding requirement are the funding sources. And Capcom is going to be talking about this tomorrow. But in the meantime, we currently have four, possibly five debt exclusions. Up to eight capital exclusions, although those can be grouped and they could be maybe three questions. The operating override. And what's a little unknown right at the moment, although maybe it's not unknown anymore, is the Senior Center. And I think we're pretty well agreed that's going to be put to fall. So if there were a property acquisition and/or an appropriation for construction, that would go to the fall. So that wouldn't be part of this. But we're going to need to decide on these ballot questions by the 22nd. And then there's a couple of non-binding that have come in. Government Study would like the non-binding on there. Shouldn't it get moved to Representative Town Meeting? And a sense of the meeting about e-voting, which is minor.
Well, the government.
The Government Study wants to change the language of that question.
They need to give me the language. This isn't even the language. This is just generally what we're.
They didn't want to be so forward with it, I think?
Yeah, I need something.
Well, just my comment on that is if they're, how do I say it? There should be a, I think it should be a recommendation or there should be some explanation of what they want. You know, we've looked at this, this and this, and we think this, or this is good, or we think this is good. You know, like in someone advocating for it, or we know what the answer is. No, we don't want to change. So I think if they do, you know, I don't think it's, what do you say, it's sort of, how do I say it? It's not, in my mind, leadership to ask, you know, if you're studying something in your committee and you're supposed to be doing it and coming back, show what you've learned, show what you've studied and why you recommend something, and then try to convince people and get the feedback then. But I think sometimes if you just say, geez, do you want this or this, I don't think that that's sort of positive sometimes.
So I don't think we're ready to recommend anything. So that's where we just wanted to get a sense of the community. And we're meeting tomorrow, but the last meeting, we were kind of saying something along the lines of, Tucker can correct me, but like what, what type of government would you like? Or do you like what we have right now? And we were even talking about multiple choice, which we're going to get clarification if we could have more than a yes/no.
Yeah, I can't speak for the whole group, but I think the idea is to keep it relatively simple. And I'm not sure that we would put in a particular alternative. It's just more like a satisfaction type of question to get some, again, non-binding feedback.
That might be fine. Yeah, that type of thing might be fine. But I think something that is, you know, as substantial as that has, people, if you say what do you like, people don't even understand what there is and what their options are and what the advantages and disadvantages are. I mean, so it's sort of, you know, I think sort of asking satisfaction would make more sense. That's a good idea.
So my message to the grand committee is I need that as soon as possible. Because it's going to have to be reviewed by Town Council too.
Can I just make one note on the Citizen Warren articles? We had 53 originally submitted. We are down to 51. Two have been properly rescinded.
What was the second one that was rescinded?
It was, it was a, it might have been a zoning from one of the real estate attorneys. And apparently the property sold, so it was a moot point.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to have any discussion about the ballot questions now, but we're getting, you don't have to, but we're getting closer to needing to.
I'd definitely like to see the eight capital exclusions grouped so that they're not quite as overwhelming. Like we talked earlier today about putting like all the vehicle acquisitions together.
So just the debt exclusions are Lubbers Lane, Newtown Road, Wait Drive and Amelia, Wait slash Amelia Drive improvements and the Children's Beach Pump Station improvement.
Is that the 15 million that was in our report here? It's like there's more than you just said.
Well, there's also whether or not you're going to include the public safety facility, which is 3 million.
Okay.
I don't know that all of that totaled 15 million, but it might be sort of close.
I was thinking earlier today, we talked about it a little bit, of the auxiliary building. If we're leaning towards having a fall, that maybe that's the appropriate timing to not bring it right back at the next one, but it's not pushing it off a whole other year.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I don't think, I don't think it would be smart. It's sort of, we get charged with not listening to people and we just keep coming back, I think. You know, they tell us that about the roundabouts all the time. I think we need to, you know, sort of.
And I'm hoping that we can pair our election in the fall with the national election, which will get us the best voter turnout that we've had in a while.
I agree. And I do agree in pushing it back at least to the fall for the public safety auxiliary building.
Okay. Do you want to talk about it more next week then, or next one?
Do we want to talk about the override? Is that the big elephant in the room? Are we ready to take a vote on it?
With some discussion, or at least discussion and then.
Well, yes.
I guess I'm a bit torn, but I just wanted Libby to kind of run through again that. This has definitely been the third year that Brian has recommended it, that I know of. And prior, prior to me being on the board, had he, how long has this been a recommendation?
At least three years, if not four. I didn't go back and look at every single budget recommendation, but I'm going to say definitely three.
If it didn't pass the ballot.
Prior to three, we'd been talking about in the future, we're going to need to think about this.
Right. If it didn't pass the ballot, it would just be business as usual.
If it didn't pass the ballot, okay, here we go.
Yes and no.
Yeah. Then. Okay, so the recommendation right at the moment is that there is an operating override for the Island Home be put forward, which requires a vote at town meeting and a ballot question. So the budget for the Island Home is developed to be contingent upon that. If it fails, then we will need a special town meeting to fund the Island Home budget. And that will be, need to be done from the General Fund. And we've already designed the General Fund budget to allow for that, which is why there's very little new or expanded or supplemental programming budgeted for fiscal '21 for the town and the school. And there are lots of requests for those things going forward, including things from board for strategic planning purposes and things like that that we're not going to be able to do if the override doesn't happen. The funding for the Island Home also is, from a financial policy point of view, not really funded correctly because it relies heavily on retained earnings.
Which should be used for once-off expenses opposed to ongoing.
Correct.
Expenses.
And the retained earnings aren't, the term retained earnings for this is so misleading because it's really state funding that we get. And we can't use it until the following year because of the way it comes in. So it's not, it's not like there was money made that's been retained.
It's not profit that's sitting there that you're retaining. It's.
It's just.
It's constrained fund.
Estate funds that are not.
And we've sort of been able to do this as long as we have because there was a windfall about three years ago where there was a larger amount.
Yeah, it was like $5 million in one year.
That just was an overlap of a couple of fiscal years. So, and then some. It was very unusual. And we haven't seen it since.
And since then, it's just decreased?
Yes.
And realistically, if it's not this year, then it will most likely at some point we're going to have to do.
Or we're going to keep.
Or we're cutting surfaces.
Go deeper into the General Fund.
Well, my worry on this is, you know, we've done a lot of work in the last couple of years. I sent you all copies of something I sent to the Enquirer Mirror for tomorrow. Sort of saying that we've done a lot of work on the Island Home. I think we're close. It isn't a question of just closing it or, you know, it's not a question of closing it or running it the way we're running it now. You know, there's other options and it's not just the two choices. And I think that, I worry that if we, you know, if we do an override, I worry that we won't have the pressure on us to continue and to find the solution in between. And so, and I worry that people won't vote for some of this. You know, so I've got a couple worries. And again, I don't think that that's the issue. I think we need an Island Home. I just think it needs to be a new model and a, you know, in a new location, maybe in a different size, you know, and a different structure. You know, so there's things that we have to sort out. And I'm afraid that if we vote an override, that there won't be the pressure to sort those things out. And, you know, I've just seen it too many times. And I think that's, and if we were doing an override and underwriting somewhere else, maybe I'd be on board. But I'm not on board because this is just adding more, you know, it's just adding, it's adding more money in. And it's sort of taking the pressure off figuring out some of the other issues we have to figure out, not just on the Island Home. So, you know, I'm just, I'm strongly against it. I think we can find another year. I think we could not put as much into some of the stabilization, even though I love them, and be back next year at this time, hopefully with a solution. I think we need a solution, permanent solution on our Island Home. And I'm afraid that this will, you know, take the pressure off.
It's interesting you say that, Matt, because I look at it, the same thing you said is, if, we won't focus on it if we do this override. I feel like because we haven't, we're not focusing on it. Because we're just relying on retained earnings year after year after year. I agree with you in that sense, but because it's not an override, because it's not hitting any extra taxes. And I think we're going to focus on it regardless. I don't think if this override happens and it passes at the ballot, that there's going to be less pressure for the public or any of us here. I just don't think we're going to take our eyes off of it regardless of which way the override goes.
Yeah, I've been working on this since the beginning of my first term in terms of wanting to find a solution because we have a failing facility. And I think the override is getting a commitment from the community that they want to continue to be in this business. And I just, I don't think it takes it away.
And I think that if we read that, I think getting an override to run it isn't necessarily a commitment for a $55 million facility costing 10 million more a year plus, you know.
That's another discussion.
It is and it isn't, going up 7% a year. I think if you went to the community and you said, you know, let's, you know, it's going to cost us 30 million and here's how we're going to do it and it's going to go up 3% a year, I think the community's all in. 100%. Boom, right away. If you go, if you went to the community and said, we're going to do it this way, you know, we're going to do this, that and the other, and it's this, they'll be all on board. But I think if we go saying we're going to run it somewhat like we're doing now, you know, and this, or if this is a referendum, I think that would be a huge mistake to think that this override is a referendum on whether we want to be in this business this way. So I just, you know, and I don't, I don't know why, I can't explain it well enough, but.
I think what the building looks like is a separate issue that we're still studying and trying to figure out how it's not going to cost us $55 million to build it. But the operating override is just continuing to run what we've got.
We did a, we pulled, I want to say, I'm just going to, when I have these numbers right, Libby, like, $700,000 a year out of the operating budget for losses from solid waste. Or the landfill, right?
Yeah.
For the mining. Mining, right. We just, we didn't override there. We took that out. But that was $700,000. It's not three or four or five million every year. And I think, I've said recently that if it was just $500,000, I think we can, we can keep it in. We can keep it in there. But now that it keeps going up and up and up, I think it's not fair to every, all the other services that this community needs to keep taking away from that. It's not the only reason to do it is to shore up money for other things. It's, I think, it's best practices fiscally for running our Island Home. And we've had five or six years where this board has said, let's go retain earnings, let's not do it. I understand why they didn't do it when we were looking for, to put the Island Home out at My Comet. It'd be too confusing to have that at a town meeting for an override in this. But here we are again, it's the same situation. If we don't do it now, why would we do it next year or the year after? Right? And the CPE goes down and down, and now we got to cut another million dollars out of operating. I hear what you're saying, Matt, and it makes sense. I don't disagree with very little of it. I just don't see the downside of operating, not with a 3A Moody rating, not with the finance department that we have now, not with Brian. Brian is very fiscally conservative and doesn't like to spend any money. And he's sitting there saying, this isn't a good idea to continue doing this. So I have a little bit of trust there as well.
I do think the building itself is pressure. I don't see us being able to step back and take a ton of time to make some decisions. I also think some of our ratings lately are pressure. I think we have to do a better job than what we're doing, and a lot of that is linked to the facility itself. I don't think there's been a sense from this board and some of the things that we've discussed and if we're discussing the design amount shortly. I don't think we've been gung ho about saying, let's push forward for a $50 million building. But what we have done, and some of it has really come from the pressure you've put on, Matt, is the consideration, more careful consideration of the demand, the analysis, asking more of, asking more from the presentation that we had a couple of months ago from KLA, CLA?
CLA.
You know, I think the whole exercise of looking at what, doing exactly what we're doing now on that location has forced us to really step back and say, what are the other options that we do have? And what other questions do we need to answer? So I just, I think in some respects, we could wait another year. But I also, I think it seems somewhat inevitable at the same time. And I, just even thinking through it tonight, I disagree that we're going to be able to take the foot off. I don't think we really have a choice. I think we have to figure it out. And I think we're all very aware that things like home health are emerging options that we need to explore that would better serve our community.
Different levels of care. I really appreciate your comments, Matt, but what I've been hearing a lot from like the Finance Committee and Brian is, it really is fiscally irresponsible not to try putting this forward.
this forward.
You know, the vote is the vote. I just, you know, I feel fairly strongly that we, you know, on this, I feel very strongly that we could get another year and have this solved by next year. But I understand and, and, and the, you know, sort of, I understand how, how the vote will go and I'll accept that and I will try not to speak at town meeting, but I just, you know, I just think that, I think that the solution is there and I, and I think that we need to show some leadership and, and, you know, and, and glom onto that when it comes and do it. I mean, I just, you know, this is, it's, anyway, you know, it's, and the hard part is if it's three or four million a year going up two and a half percent again, that's in the budget, we've done it every year, that's fine. The problem is it's, you know, it's, it's more than that, or it has been, historically been more than that, be all expenses in, and it's, and what we've, you know, and it's crowded out all the other things, maintenance, repair. That building was not up to code the day we built it. We applied for, for what do you call it? Exemptions from the, you know, from the, the day we built it. You know, so I just think that, sort of, when we haven't maintained it, we, you know, so I just think that we wanna make sure we know what we're doing and can handle the next, if, if we do it again. Like if we look at this as a referendum on whether we should be, should be operating a, you know, an Island Home, I think we're, we're making a huge mistake. You know, this isn't a referendum operating the Island Home if it passes with us in a town meeting. This should be a referendum on, you know, on whether we need to prop it up for a couple more years till we figure out the right thing to do. You know, that's, that, you know, that's how we should be viewing it. The town should be viewing it on, you know, that, not on, do we, you know? So, anyway.
Libby, if, if this passed the town meeting and passed at the ballot in FY '21, I think you said that we may not need to use any of that because we've already done the, the budget for FY '21. That, I'm sorry. You know where I'm getting, kind of?
The override would fund it, so the levy, so, but, but the general fund budget would already be set.
Right, so that extra, that extra amount that would be there really wouldn't be accessed in FY '21? Am I not thinking about that right?
The, the, it's hard, it's hard to.
Unused levy capacity?
Yeah, it would be unused levy capacity, basically, for the one year.
Right.
Or perhaps even ongoing, depending on, you know, that, I mean, there's something to what Matt is saying about the, the override for the Island Home. And so now we, we know that, and one of our reasons is that that will let there be additional services and programs in the general fund, but what, like he, he was saying earlier, we shouldn't be saying, okay, now we have $5 million, so now we have to spend it all. We, so we still need to be careful about that because I, sure that is, is natural, there are potential parties out there who already would like to spend it all. But in that first year and even ongoing, you, you know, we're gonna have to be disciplined about it. Just, if we get the override, that doesn't mean that we get to all of a sudden spend it all.
Basically, there's $5 million left, growing at two and a half percent. You know, so you have five, what this will do is free up $5 million, growing at two and a half percent. And the only way to not have that in place is to do an underwrite. There's actually is such a thing called an underwrite. I think there's been one or two in the whole history of the state that where people have gone in and asked for it. If you look, it's, you know, I looked to see how many people really did it, it's rare. But there actually is such a thing and, you know, we're not proposing to do that. You know, so that's what this, which is, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I just, in full disclosure, that is what happens.
Well, and we're also not proposing, certainly town administration is not proposing to spend all of the $5 million. However, there are a lot of needs and plans and demands for service that we could accommodate better.
I just, I just wanted to ask about the timing and if I knew it wasn't touched in FY '21, it, you know, it's to, to the next cycle. We, we have a full nine, pretty much nine months to really look at the budget when it starts in July, right?
Yep.
So if I knew it's not gonna be like, like what kind of what people are gonna say, like a quick money grab the second it's there, it's gonna go through a whole other process. Does it feel a little more comfortable?
I think the, possibly the way to explain what you're getting at, Jason, is that the, if, if it was approved by both, we wouldn't spend to the entire levy limit. So the impact, the full impact would not hit in '21.
Wouldn't hit, wouldn't hit, or any taxes.
Wouldn't hit the tax bills.
Because we would keep the levy limit low enough that it wouldn't increase. At least that's a possibility.
And Matt, to clarify, you feel that we might need the pressure of being forced to make cuts to make sure we come up with an answer for our Island Home?
I don't think, I don't think it's, I'm not talking about making cuts. When you, when, it's sort of, how do I say it? This is, this happens at the federal government level where they, you know, where it doesn't go up as much as people want and they call that a cut. If something's going up, you know, 3%, but you really want it five, that's not a cut. It's still went up 3%. Our budget, you know, our, it's still gonna go up two and a half percent plus new growth. You know, our budget still goes up. We're not, I'm not suggesting we cut, you know, so.
But some expenses go up more than that, whether it's insurance or.
Well, some, some do and some don't and, and, and some of them we have control on. Or, and we, and so, anyway, if you, if you, if you look at the budget and you say the, you know, the new growth pays for new positions and new things, you know, and the two and a half percent plays for everything else and you budget within those known constraints, then you, and you don't, you don't, you know, you don't crowd out maintenance and repair and crowd out other positions and things, then you don't face, you don't have to override everything, you don't have to face the situation we're facing. It's, it's kinda, anyway, it's, it's, I, I just view it a little differently and it's, you know, it, it's why I've been so vocal, you know, during all the negotiations. It's why, I, I just think that we need to look at, you know, it's why we're hopefully doing community, compact community best practices this year, is how do you make sure people are paid fairly and that you're looking at everything properly, not just, you know, not, so we've, you've had, I've had the conversations with all you guys. So I, so I, I'm not saying to cut anything, you know, and to portray it as, I wanna cut, make cuts at Island Home is not true.
No, sorry, I wasn't, just more general, I'm trying to understand where you see the pressure coming from. Because I'm trying to understand, I, I do think we need to get this done. And while I do think the building is pressure itself, I think we've set ourselves up on a track to make it a priority. And I, again, I think our, our ratings themselves are pressure. So I'm just trying to understand where you feel the pressure's coming from when it's within the general fund.
There's a lot, well, there'll be, there'll be a lot of, there's a lot of things we have to do, a lot of the things, like we have, we have no housing for the Island Home. I've advocated for housing employees if we're gonna continue to run it, we need to house people, you know, that 55 didn't count any housing, you know? And if we wanna house, we have to have the, you know, we have to get concessions from the union to house employees and they're gonna want us, they're gonna wanna get paid for that. You know, they're gonna, so they wanna get, so the, the pressure isn't just on the town, it's on all the other factors that have to happen for us to, you know, we, you know, if we wanna change the model, we have a change of working conditions. All that has to be bargained, all it has to be agreed upon. You know, so there's a lot of other aspects that, that, you know, that when we kind of, when we find the right path for this, there's, I think, a lot of other dominos in that path that have to fall for us to be able to do, you know, a really top-notch, long-term care facility on Antucket in some manner, you know? And, and I'm worried that if we do this, we won't have the pressure on all different entities in order to get to that. So.
I think, I think the pressure is still there to figure out the long-term care. And I think whatever it looks like, whether it's a $50 million building or a $30 million building or some combination of providing different services, they're all gonna need to be subsidized. So we need the money to do it. That's just.
I have two questions I just thought of. Will we be doing this going forward in FY '22, '23?
It, it goes on top of the general fund forever.
And then have we done this before with another department ever?
The most recent, I think, was we did one for mosquito control one, one year and we've had two operating overrides for solid waste. Those are the most recent that I can think of for operating. It's not retained.
I was just curious. And solid waste is the other enterprise fund that we subsidize. I would also, I would echo what Jason said, it does hold a lot of weight for me that Brian has recommended this year after year.
You kind, you should, you kinda should vote. I'm, it's, I'm not gonna be offended.
I'm waiting for someone to decide if they wanna vote.
You know, I, I, you know, I could say, geez, Brian's recommended for a couple of years and they were planting a seed for a couple of years before, you know, that's, it wasn't, it hasn't been a, you know, they haven't beat down the doors on it until this year, really. But, you know, I, I just think, you know, I've had my say, you guys know.
Or we can wait one more week.
Jason won't be here next week. So we're short board members, but.
I'll make a motion to put it in the warrant. Sorry. Or you can do the same thing.
Yep.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four to one. Now the FinCom needs to review it.
One of the biggest challenges is.
Tell me when you do and I'll show up. Please.
Big challenge is explaining this to those in the community who don't do this and, you know, have access to talk to Brian about it and talk to Matt about it every day, to explain, not just in Tavany floor, but even just coming up to that, right? And not, not in one way or the other, just to help people make, make a decision and understand the, the, the process and the complexity of it. Is there a last big thing?
The other piece of this, yeah. You want me to? So the other thing we talked about today is that we do not have all of the information that we've been working on in terms of really determining all the levels of need in terms of designing this new facility. And although we had talked before about pairing this override with going forward with a request for design, we think that that's, we, Rita and I think that that was a little premature. And if we're having a fall town meeting, we might try and get the rest of that information that we're working on and come up with a plan to present in the fall.
Is there not enough time for placeholder and get the information? Is it still too tight?
I think it's too tight at this stage to really do the outreach and really decipher, and for us to really talk about all of our options to, before we, if we go forth with five, I mean, we could appropriate it and not necessarily spend it, but we just have no idea if five million's the right number. That's based on a $50 million concept design that we, we may change significantly.
I think it makes sense to wait.
We did talk a little bit today about possibly instead of asking for five million for design, asking for something much less than that to help secure any necessary professional services to look at the other model options.
Yeah, so we were thinking 500 as an alternative. Sort of basing it on what we've spent to date already and again, decoupling it from the $50 million building, which is where the $5 million came from, and really working to dig into the details of the needs and the options and the alternatives.
And we might not spend that full amount, but to authorize it.
That, to me, makes more sense. The five million, I think, is, was dead on arrival, 50 million is insanity. You know, I have a buddy in the business and that was, you know, six times, eight times per bed what they would be spending to do a facility. And so I think that, you know, they tried to do it at 200,000 a bed and we were talking about one, two a bed. It, you know, a million, two per bed doesn't make a lot of sense. I think that, you know, if we have the money available and we have, you know, and can get the, sort of the brain power on it and the, you know, sort of the stuff we need, I think that would be really important. You know, figure out what the demand is, figure out what the model is and et cetera, those types of things. I think that's, you know, that's something I could support and I think that's something we should as a community, you know, as a board, support and go to town meeting with. But, you know, and I, but I think we should also should be setting up a timeframe and not coming last minute, a couple of months before town meeting, oh, it's summer, oh, we didn't have time, well.
No.
Like if we've gotta put a real, real deadlines and, and get this thing.
Rachel's already been, been working on this quite, quite a bit, getting the right person to do this analysis and it's, it's, it's just, it's in the works, but we don't feel like there's enough time to get to the beginning of April.
Yeah, I understand.
But, I mean, just so you know, it's not like, oh, we'll start after the April vote. It's already been started.
I understand.
Because we still have, I think, about $300,000 left.
Well, walk me through, this is a potential timeline. So special town meeting, ideally, we would have two or three options to bring to town meeting, or we would all be, decide on one option and then we would ask for design and then the following April town meeting in 2021 would be the big ask for whatever it is? No?
I'm not sure we've even thought it through that far. I think the idea would be hopefully to have some kind of a plan that could be brought to the board or, or some kind of a model like, like Dawn was talking about, that the board could, I'm just making this up, but yes, we, that's the model we want. And then we would have to go from there for what sort of design would there be that's different than what's already been put forward? So '21 maybe?
I think based on the, I can't remember, it wasn't an RFP, but we did put it out to, we put it out to bid or an RFP to have consultants come back to us to give us the information that we needed. And I think initially we thought at one point in time, we might be able to get it by March, really close to the deadline, maybe a little bit earlier, February, I think. And there's just been a couple of things that have slowed that down a bit that I, I think if we continued to put pressure on it, we would have, we could have the information back from consultants by the summer, early summer, and then we'd have the ability to see what they said in terms of looking at the needs, the beds, the breakdowns, the possibilities. I think where we've been coming at it to date is we have 45 beds, what would a 45-bed facility look like? And what we're looking for, what we've been looking for is someone to say to us, maybe you could use 20 beds of this and 10 beds of this and coming at it from the other direction. And so I think that the idea is these consultants will give us what we need, their, their recommendations based on what we need, and then we might have time to come up with what that would look like by next town meeting. I think it's possible. But failing that, then it would be the following, you know, it might take more time to develop what the options are. And if there's one option that looks the best, that might be the one that we recommend, but we vetted the other ones in between. That's my sort of understanding, but.
But so, I, I know you don't wanna put exact dates, you know, on this day and this week, but I'm just afraid of this taking five more years.
Yeah.
Let's, let's really put some pressure on us.
I think the goal would still be to come up with building something on site and asking for design in the fall. But it just might be a slightly different setup than what, what's already been proposed because we, we just keep hearing that we don't necessarily need 45 beds of skilled nursing care, that there are some people who are in the facility who are only there because they don't have, there's not another option for them and that maybe we could create that other option. And there's a little bit more of a variety of services that are still subsidized in the same way, but maybe cost different levels.
And I think actually that, sorry, just sort of thinking about on the fly, it is probably looking for a justifiable, accurate design cost by special town meeting is what we would expect. Because the five million, it felt, we had sort of the opinion from the architects and the consultants and we were just looking for more information. So I think that would be the minimal expectation is there's a, a design element, a number that we know.
I think that would be helpful to the public because we come back and say, oh no, we're gonna go back to the drawing board. That's what they're gonna hear if we don't have, here's what's happening this fall.
And, and it could come back that, that they say, you do need your 45 beds because you have a growing population and then you need, then you need additional services and we've got to evaluate what that looks like too. and then you need, then you need additional services, and we've got to evaluate what that looks like, too.
Matt, we did, we've had two plans now, we've had the greenhouse model that came to us, and then when we had this next, the second plan done on site, with the, you know, the two big, the one building and build a second one. We had the first consultant, which is almost unheard of, came back and said, well, what are you guys doing going back to the, your traditional, your traditional model? You know, what, why did you hire us? What, what are you doing? Which, you know, they never do that. And so I think that we really, uh, you know, so, so that's one thing. The other one, I don't think we should be only thinking of doing it, you know, on the existing site. I believe if there's a better, uh, location, a more cost-effective and better-served location that we can come up with, if there's a better model, we should be exploring that. And I think that, you know, I don't think we should constrain ourselves to that location. I mean, we, we could use that location as a senior center, for example. You know, so I, I just, I, I don't wanna, before, uh, Walter Barnicki, I was fortunate enough, before he died, I met with him, and he, and he told me a story. He, he said he hired the best people in the world and asked, uh, you know, and he said, I wanna build a, a dock, I wanna build a marina. And they said, oh, here's how you build a marina. And it was, you know, you fill in the wetlands down at the end, you know, down at the end of the street, and you have your marina. And he said, oh, jeez, that's, you know, that's not right. So he asked the second-best company in the country, hey, I wanna build a marina, how do I build a marina? Well, you build it down here in the wetlands, that's what you do. So he, he spent a lot of money. He went to the third company and said, and he said, how do I build a marina next to downtown? They said, oh, here's what you do. And so the point of that story is that that's, the way you ask the question gives you back your answer a lot of times. And if we say we only wanna do it on this site, you know, we're, we're gonna get that answer. Whereas if we say, what is the best way to give care? If, say, they come back, they come back, you say you have to do these three levels of care, and you need a whole home healthcare, you know, arm on this, and it's gonna take X square feet, we may not be able to fit it all there. You know, so I just, I just want us to be flexible and, and open to what other possibilities exist.
I do feel like we've been pretty well-charged by vocal community members with figuring out rebuilding on site. But it may look like rebuilding in more than one location, different services. But I, I, I just, I feel like we have to bring forward some proposal that includes building a portion of this on site.
Then I, then I think you're gonna, I, my, my read of the politics on this, you might win at town meeting, but I think the voters, when they, when they know it's thirty or forty or fifty, are gonna vote it down at the ballot, and I think that that would be, and I don't think that's, so anyway, I, I just.
But it's gonna cost that much wherever we build it.
It, it depends what you're building, and how, anyway.
I mean, the, the numbers for the senior center are.
That scares the, yeah, the pants off me.
Yeah, and I, I do think, I think we've been doing both, I think we've been responding to what the voters asked us to do. But I think over the past couple of months, we have been working towards, um, asking that question, how do, how do we really best serve the needs of the community? And that's where there's, feels like there's still a question mark, we need to understand more about that needs analysis, who needs what, where and when, and we need that very specifically. So I, I do think we're, on one hand, we've, we've looked at building on site, we're questioning whether that's the only option we have for building on site, but we also are trying to get to the bottom of what is going to serve the community the best. And, and I do think we feel pressure regardless. I know I do, I think we've made some good headway and we have momentum. And I, I think stepping away from the five million dollar for design and looking, focusing more on getting the information helps us keep that momentum.
So would everyone be comfortable with a, a vote to ask for five hundred thousand to continue the planning?
Some move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I, and I'm not against it, just, you know, just to be clear, I'm not against it at all. I just want to be, have a top-notch facility that we, we or someone else can run well, and that we can staff, and that will serve us for fifty years. I'm the closest in age to going there of this whole board. I used to be the young guy, now I'm the guy about to go there, so, you know, I want it done by the time I'm ready, so.
We should have it done in thirty years.
Thirty years, okay.
Okay, are we good? Committee reports quickly?
Yeah, I have one, and just because it's a bit of, I think, an important one. Um, Board of Health had, um, our discussion, we got the results back from S Mast, which we've been waiting for, I think, since last August. And it has to do with looking at, um, different scenarios to achieve the TMDL for, um, Matikit. And essentially, they came back, they looked at, I think, five, five or six different scenarios, and none of the scenarios get us to the TMDL limit, even in combination. So I, I think what to expect from the Board of Health is that, um, they're going to discuss again, and they're going to put forward recommendations. We voted to implement the regulations by, I think, April fifteenth or April first, which would mean that, um, essentially, anyone in Matikit, um, when they build, sell, transfer, I think, they trigger needing to replace with an IA system. However, I, I do think that there's going to be a recommendation that we consider SEOR, because there doesn't look to be any other way that we can achieve the TMDLs. Um, and there's also a concern, again, about some of the emerging contaminants and not being able to even address any of those with septic. So, um, we asked Roberto to come back with, um, if he can get costs on what those different scenarios, what those would be, um, if we have some revised costs and possible SEOR, and then, um, presentation on S Mast for this board, as well as recommendations from the Board of Health. That's it.
Okay. Kristin?
Do you wanna go?
The Plastics Group has been continuing to meet and talking about the single-use plastics ban. Um, we just met this week with Cumberland Farms, and that was one of the other larger retailers that we were doing one-on-one meetings with. Um, we've been working on going to the businesses or having them come to us, rather than having those public information sessions in which we only had a few attendees come. But, like I said earlier in the meeting, everybody is, not excited, but willing to comply and just wanting to understand all of, everything that's banned and how they can comply. And so Graham's been really great about offering to go into their businesses and do audits. Um, so that's an option for any business out there that's, um, interested in knowing if they're in compliance or before they order a bunch of stock, if they wanna check with Graham before they order it. We've learned from all the businesses that water bottles are the most difficult thing to replace. And so Cumberland Farms, you know, is looking at like one liter and above and just filling all of the, the, um, refrigerators with those. And vending machines are the other thing, that we're trying to track down every vending machine on Nantucket to notify the person that they can't have the single-use plastic water bottles. But they, um, somebody just approved seven water stations, is that land bank? Yes?
I don't know what number, but I know they have been approving them, yeah.
So there remain the Greenhound Building and Department of Culture and Tourism, we've got a couple going on. So there's seven outside and then a couple more inside. So there's gonna be options for refilling water outside and inside.
Uh, can I just ask a quick question? Um, I think a while ago, Lydia, you sent us a photo of almost like a water vending machine itself.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if anyone has thought about that?
Stop and drop.
Yep, stop and drop, and then we also mentioned it to Cumberland Farms, and they seemed like they're gonna explore it.
Great.
As well. Um, 'cause that was their biggest concern, is all the construction people that go there in the morning and get a big case. They said they sell about five hundred cases of water a week. And so to have to replace that, um, they need something that can give that much demand.
And that's also affordable. But I think if these guys can bring their own larger containers and fill those, that would be great.
And then just, the twenty-twenty census group is still meeting, but they just posted a job, and they increased the pay for Nantucket, so it's twenty-two dollars an hour if you wanna be a surveyor, so you can apply. I think it's USAjobs.gov, but it's definitely on the town site.
Just back to your, it's funny, I hadn't thought of replacing it with liter and above. That just shows you the, you know, it's sort of, the unintended consequence, I hadn't thought of that. I replaced sixteen-ounce with twelve-ounce cans last fall, so that was a prelude, and I tried to do my sorting, but it didn't quite get there. It's, it's a lot harder than you'd think. But, I, you know, I hadn't thought that, oh, they'll all just go to liter bottles. You know, so if we get a bunch of big-liter bottles bought for fifty cents each, and, you know, so anyway, just interesting.
He said that's what they've done in their other towns that have banned the single-use plastic, and we kind of said, you know, we're not gonna, that is complying, but it's still having plastic on Nantucket and going into our landfill or recycling, and so it's not the best use going forward. You know, your, your suggestion is a lot better, but it is still being compliant.
Baby steps.
Or what they'll do, or what's gonna happen, they're gonna come over, it's gonna, they're gonna, yeah, gonna buy it on Amazon, or they're gonna bring it over in the, in the morning on the, on the truck. I mean, that's, it's kind of, some of this, it's, yeah. The water business is very interesting, they pay next to nothing, and then they can sell it for, you know, fifty cents, you know, a dollar a bottle, and they're making seventy-five cents, or, you know, it's, it's a huge, huge moneymaker. So it's, it's a, you know, it's very, you know, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of pressure in that industry.
I think it's also a one-part statement, and I think that as other places around us move, we can see it with the plastic bags now. That'll change, but I think in the meantime, yeah, there, people are gonna look for loopholes.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Two quick things, Madam Chair, I just wanna thank the Sandbar for, I know it's in the contract to, to send that, but it's, you know, forty-five thousand dollars going ASAP is pretty awesome. So I know Matt and previous boards were, um, involved in creating that new type of contract where it goes that, so that's great. But they also did a, like a dollar drink deal and raised twenty-five hundred dollars to go to natural, natural resources. They didn't have to do that, so I just wanna thank the Sandbar for doing that. And then we had a cable advisory contract committee, I'm not even sure what our acronyms are. But I think, um, on the twenty-second of January, or soon after, we should see a contract for the going up to five percent, and, um, that's pretty much coming to an end. That's all I have.
Great.
I wanted to bring up ASAP, too, so thank you, and I thought it was pretty cool of Sandbar to do that with their drink. And if other restaurants went in on that, too, that'd be pretty cool.